I'd like to welcome everybody to a regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card and file it with the secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience. While Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the Chair. Roll call, please.
Chair Zabilla.
Here.
Vice Chair Jagiello.
Here.
Commissioners Merk.
Here.
Corbin.
Here.
Nolan.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
Commissioner Quill is the absent.
Commissioner Merk, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is the part of the evening dedicated to public communications, which is the time set aside during Planning Commission meetings for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. I do not have any speaker's cards for non-agendized items. Does anybody want to speak on something not on the agenda? Councilmember Wirick.
Chair Zabilla, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Is this your 30th birthday, or?
It's my 39th birthday, again.
Anyway, but happy birthday.
Thank you so much. Darn it.
She was happy.
Moving on, to our consent items.
The first consent item is the minutes of the regular meeting of Planning Commission, October 19, 2016. Do I have a motion, or any comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the October 19.
And I will second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Merk.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Jagiello.
Yes.
Zabilla.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to our second consent item, minutes of the regular meeting of Planning Commission, November 2, 2016.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November 2, 2016.
Have a second?
I will make the second.
Roll call, please.
Merk.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Jagiello.
Yes.
Zabilla.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Moving on to consent item number three, minutes of the regular meeting of Planning Commission, November 16, 2016.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November 16.
All right, we've got a thing going here, so I'll make a second.
Roll call, please.
Merk.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Jagiello.
Yes.
Zabilla.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Okay, we don't have any disclosure of site visits, so we will move on to our public hearing item, which is our second unit ordinance discussion for text amendment. TA 15-08, like to hear from staff, please.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So, excuse me, this is continuation of the Planning Commission's review and discussion of the zoning text amendment for the, now to be referred to as accessory dwelling unit ordinance, or ADUs. So, lot has happened since, and we know we've all been working on this for a really long time, but recently the city council has adopted an urgency ordinance to bring the city's second unit ordinance in compliance with the new state law that becomes effective January 1, 2017. That has occurred, so there's some fundamental changes now with the way that the second unit ordinance reads. Is it okay if I just call it accessory dwelling unit? Can we just move over to the other name? Thanks, okay. So, with that said, became kind of a difficult task in trying to develop a path to get you forward on, one, what you'd originally talked to the city council in regards to what they gave you direction on, what the urgency ordinance folded in, and two, the considerations that you had back at your last joint meeting, as particular as it is in regards to making sure that the ordinance reflects the ability for the city to serve water, sewer, and those types of things. I think you talked about water-wise, I think, in particular. And so, what we, what staff decided to do, because it gets very complex now with the new state law, there's, if you're doing this type of ADU, there's one set of rules. If you're converting existing living space, there's another set of rules. If it's going on top of a garage, there's another set of rules. And so, to try to kind of make it a little bit simpler, we broke it down into a matrix, and what we were kind of hoping in doing a matrix is that through working through this, we'd have something that really readies you to the public, so you could just kind of follow along. Okay, so am I, what kind of ADU am I doing? Am I doing a detached ADU? Am I doing an attached ADU? Am I doing an attached ADU that's a conversion of existing living space? Or am I converting an already existing accessory building? Or am I going on a second floor? And so, we kind of broke it down, because that sort of is where everything kind of divides. So, you kind of first have to know what a person's going to do. Some of these units, and you can see as you go down through, the state really has restricted the city from putting on additional impediments. I guess the premise would be, I think you provided in your packet, the new law, the redlined version of the law, so you can see where the changes were made. I think that in the new law, it's very clear the purpose of what the state was trying to achieve, so that's a fundamental baseline that your deliberation should take into consideration. But with the, with the difference, with the different divisions and different types of units, obviously some would have greater impacts and some would have lesser, because you're converting already existing living unit into a separate unit, really has less impacts. So, kind of is divided that way, then we go through permitted zones, lot size, setbacks, lot coverage, height, stories, maximum floor area, number of units allowed on-site, parking within a quarter of a mile, or half a mile of a transit. Staff worked with the people that provide these maps, for you to have a little map of a half a mile from the transit stops, and those are the trolley stops. So, just explaining the map in general, the city limit lines kind of gets blurred a little bit, because obviously there's some trolley stops that go outside the limit lines. So, where the, where the blue is dark and the gray comes up, that's all the city limit line, so the overlaying, the blue on top of the gray makes it a darker blue, if that makes any sense to you. And so, the darker blue would be where no parking is required, because you're within a half a mile of a public transit stop, and the lighter blue is where that would hold true, but out in the county. And then the gray areas would be not within a half mile, and my copy kind of looks gray pink, but those would be the areas where then somebody would have to provide an extra parking space for the half, for the unit. So, again, we're trying to think about how it gets implemented, making it easy. The maps are meant to help people be able to identify where they live. I understand there's no streets on them, and we can get that worked better and better, but we're trying to get some baselines for you to kind of have some knowledge, so you could work on your discussions tonight. And then, then down, further down here on, we get into the driveways, what you wanted, short-term rental, deed restriction, and then design review. And again, Matt can probably help you walk through some of the nuances of the state law and what you can and cannot do. But when it gets down here to, you know, the, I think it's on page eight of eight, we talk about no short-term rentals, and then, of course, we point out that, you know, the accessory dwelling units have always been, I shouldn't say always, since we've deliberated on this, they've always been exempt from the city's growth management allocations and their traffic impacts. That's always been the way it's been. So, that's just kind of stated, so it's very clear to someone's coming in, you know, what triggers they're going to trip, you know, and what isn't. And then finally, we have, under the deed restriction, the original direction from council was that they would consider hardship waivers, and so, I just took a, just a kind of pie in the sky stab at this, because in my experience in listening to everyone talk about it, the scenarios that were always brought up is when a person can't live in their house. Not that they don't choose to, but they can't, and that, and so, I basically took, well, you're too ill, you're dead, or you're in military service, and maybe there's some others you can put in there, but basically, you know, if you're hospitalized, or you are in an assisted living because you need assistance in living, then that's a hardship. If you're on active duty and you can't be here, because, you know, the military's called you for it, then that's not within your control. And then finally, if the owner's deceased and the property is pending the dispensation of the estate, you know, it's some, the estate, excuse me, somehow or another, you know, it's held up, you still should be able to rent and make income. The estate shouldn't lose that while it's being whatever, whatever's going on, or probate. So, kind of those are things. I did very clearly mark that this is a working draft on the very top. It's a basis for you to take the information and tell me what you don't like, what the format you don't like, what modifications, deletions. It's just there for, it took in most of the things you talked about previously, married with those things from state law, and then gave you a format for you to say, you know, I like, I don't like, move this. I know some things would have, it was a lot of work to get it, it's actually ended up being much more complex than I thought it was going to be in trying to make it clear. I think maybe it would have been clearer if I would have been able to color-code what cells you can't touch, you know, what is actually state law, what came from, what came from council, what, you know, and so, the next time around, if you decide to give me a direction, I will be happy to do that, you know, maybe color-code it, because I can, right now, Matt and I are here, and we can tell you, the parking is all state law, you know, and with that said, I just want to point out, and if you read my staff report, you'll note that the state has sent out emails to everybody and indicated that they'll be publishing the guidelines. I don't know if they're the formal guidelines, or the public comment.
It'll be the draft.
Be the draft, okay. Should be, they said, early to mid-December. Well, it's probably going to be mid to late December, you know, just the way things go, but, because we're already, you know, through the first part of December. But that is something that will be important, and I think could add some clarity to some of the issues that staff's been receiving from everybody. For instance, you know, the issues about what is the minimum size you have to have, and the maximum size that you have to allow, and do you have to allow those in every district? I mean, obviously, state law in here is saying you can have a minimum and maximum, so logic would tell you they're not the same number, because, you know, if it's the same number, a minimum and maximum would just say 1,200. But it does say that you have to allow at least an efficiency unit. I think in your diocese now, you got what the building code refers to as the minimum, and remember that bathrooms are not, you know, there's like lots of definitions, so we can find out exactly the minimum for you. There is some provisions in the state law that talk about the city can't prohibit the size restrictions down to the point that you can't at least get a 500-square-foot unit or an efficiency unit, so I know the question is, how low can a person go? And I assume that that question might be asked of Mr. Summers. Can you take yourself down lower than the city allows you? You know, that would be the consideration. Also, can you limit, you know, can you limit like it was before and not go all the way up to 1,200? And that's, you know, some, a question I think that everyone has, and Mr. Summers can give you the, his interpretation or his legal opinion on that, and I think that's being read by various people differently at this point, so. So, staff has put that in the staff report, and very clearly noted that when the city council adopted the urgency ordinance, they adopted it at 1,200, so you can go all the way up to 1,200. Obviously, if you're converting a living space, it's going to be 1,200 or 50% of the primary unit, so most people are going to have smaller than 1,200, because, you know, not everyone has a 2,400-square-foot house, and that doesn't include the garage when you're converting that over and making the percentage change. So, with that, I think I kind of labored on a little bit about why it's in the format it is, and what staff was hoping to just put it out there and not give you a lot of rationale for why it was done, other than listening, taking what you have given me as my job to do, and folding that in with state law. And the urgency ordinance, the way council adopted the urgency ordinance, so there's three factors in there. And I think that's it, unless you have any questions for me.
Commissioner Nolan.
Well, I wanted to thank you for the format. I thought it was very easy to understand.
Thank you.
And I like your idea about possibly, you know, we'll see how it goes tonight, but the color coding could take it to another step, so I think that's great. And one other question I had was, so that we know that council adopted the emergency ordinance, is there any type of a time crunch on us getting this process done?
I don't, I don't think so.
Or a target date, or?
I don't think so. I think the urgency ordinance ensures that the city is operating in compliance of state law, and.
Okay.
And, you were going to, I see you reaching, Matt, go for it.
There's no timeline for the Planning Commission and the council to make the further amendments to the second unit, or now accessory dwelling unit ordinance. The urgency ordinance has taken effect. Those changes have been made, as was required to bring the city's ordinance to the bare minimum of compliance by January 1, but there's no expiration date on those changes, and there's no, thus, it allows time for the commission and the council to consider the broader changes. Thank you.
Okay, good.
I will just, I'll just add this in, I just think because we've been going so long on it, and everybody kind of has the issues at hand, it does make it somehow, sometimes more difficult for the public if the things are just always constantly in sort of a state of flux. I think it's kind of important that we move it forward. I mean, I think the city council gave the Planning Commission a timeframe for it. I do think that you need to be thoughtful and wait till possibly the guidelines come out, you know, and, but, but at some point, you know, it is confusing to people when rules are always changing and they're not sure, and maybe they're going to, this and maybe that, and, and so, I think right now, you know, there's still, there's still, there's still a reason to kind of put energy behind it and flush it out, as long as we are aware that we're not going ahead of what the state is providing us for guidance.
Right, good, and, yeah, and I was kind of thinking along the same lines, but also wanted to make sure we got to have input with the guidelines, so, good. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, if not, I am going to open the public hearing, and we have a number of speaker cards, so Jeff Palmer.
Chair Commissioners and Staff, I'm Jeff Palmer. I'm the General Manager of the Ojai Valley Sanitary District. I had the chance to watch the tape from your November 16 Planning Commission, and some things have been happening in the world of second units, and I thought I'd come and at least tell you where we are, with specific comment about Senate Bill 1069. We've done a exhaustive legal review of that as it applies to us, and as it stands, we believe that 1069 does not apply to us as a special district. So, what that means is, we will continue to require accessory dwelling units, second units, whatever kind of name you put on them, if they meet the definition of our single dwelling unit in our code, that they would be required to pay the connection fees and sewer service fees. So, that's where we are. I know there's some contention about some of that, but I wanted to at least put it on record of where we are and what we're going to continue to do as we go forward. But if there are any specific questions, I'll be happy to answer them. I know there's probably more dialogue to go in the future.
Mr. Palmer, in your mind, are there any exceptions to that? In any of this that you're seeing, in any of these configurations that you're seeing?
No, we, we looked at the law. Our attorneys have met with a number of other agencies throughout the state, and the land use regulations and the health and safety regulations are different, and under the code as it's specified, we don't believe, and as many other agencies don't believe, that it applies to a special district whose sole purpose is sewer service, not land use kinds of decisions. And so, there is the chance that follow-along legislation could take place in 2017, or however it moves forward, and we would do a review of that and comply with whatever those changes in legislation were, should they come down. But at this point in time, we're sort of bound by our code and the laws we see it, and continuing to apply that definition consistently across the board.
So, whether they get permission before or after they're going to pay that connection fee, in your mind?
Right, so, as we continue to do, we have many units that we find through a variety of sources. Some come in and ask for a permit before they build, some come in after the fact, some we find through our enforcement actions, some are used as second units, some are used as vacation rentals, and many people are paying those connection fees on a regular basis. So, however we find them, or they come to us ahead of time, we'd prefer that. It's a lot more pleasant of a process than catching someone after they've built a unit and occupied it for a period of time. But we're kind of bound by making sure that we're consistent in our application of those standards, no matter what kind of second unit it is.
So, it still holds true that if you build a legal guest house that does not have a kitchen in it, that there is no surfe, is that correct?
That's right. So, our definition of a dwelling unit is essentially a kitchen, we call it a food preparation area, it's a bathroom and a living space, and a separate entrance. So, if someone does not meet all of those definitions, then they're not a dwelling unit, however that occurs. It could be a cabana that doesn't have a kitchen, a poolhouse, it could be a piece of an existing house that doesn't have a separate entrance and can't be walled off. We've seen a number of units where people have sort of a kitchen in one end of the house and a room that meets the definition of a kitchen somewhere else, like a wet bar or a game room or something, but it's not a separate unit with a separate entrance that can be blocked off, and so it doesn't meet that definition. So, a guest house without a kitchen would not meet that definition of a dwelling unit.
Right, and I'm going to ask this to staff, a question on, we still on the books have a guest house and a distinguishing, distinguishing difference between a guest house and a second dwelling. In this process, are we anyway eliminating the definition of guest house? Okay, that's still going to be in place.
Guest house will remain as a separate possible structure type on a residential property.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you.
Marcy Toshner.
Good evening, Commissioners. As you continue along your deliberative process, there are just some general concepts I think you need to bear in mind. I'm sure you probably already are, but in case you're not, one thing, it's my understanding that the purpose of this Senate bill was to create more affordable housing units in the state of California, correct? My concern is that with the easing up of all of the red tape surrounding permitting and approving a secondary or accessory dwelling unit, that you're going to have a deluge of them, and what we've experienced in Ojai with short-term rentals and enforcing the zoning for Ojai, keeping them out of our housing stock, it's been impossible. They're still going on despite the ban. They haven't totally disappeared yet, but I think that this opens up another pathway to flood Ojai with short-term rentals, disguised however they're going to be disguised, and presents a whole other set of problems. So, I'm hoping in with, as part of, if this is permitted with the state law, as part of the processing, the permitting process, that perhaps the permit applicant could enter into some kind of a, an agreement with the state of Ojai, kind of a contractual relationship, maybe, that where they are agreeing that the purpose of the unit, and the unit will only be used for either their personal family or for a long-term tenant, and they will not be using it as a short-term rental, and impose consequences if it's discovered that it is being used as a short-term rental that would be so, would be so large that it would be a deterrent, talking significant amount of money, whatever, what other repercussions you can think of. So, that's something that I'd like to be kind of in the forefront, because I see potential for abuse there. And then, looking at the areas where these are going to be permitted, the VMU is, you know, there's a lot of affordable housing, low-income housing in the VMU, and it's pretty compact, it's pretty dense, there's a lot of traffic around there, it's by the downtown area, so I would like you to consider the various zones where these are going to be permitted. Then, thinking about the water, you are adding, you will be adding additional demands to our water inventory, adding more toilets, adding more sinks, things like that, that weren't there before, and possibly more people will be in these units, so we might have an influx of more people in Ojai, although, from what I can tell, a lot of people who are already in Ojai are desperately looking for places to live to. And, yeah, traffic, keep that in mind, you know, all the usual Ojai concerns, but, thank you.
Thank you, Marcy. Vicki Carlton-Burn.
Wow, so, I have to speak off the cuff, and that's not always a good idea. I have concerns, as Marcy does, about the short-term rentals. I've mapped them and identified them, and I can say that just making a rule that says you can't have these accessory dwelling units be short-term rentals doesn't mean they're not going to be. Doesn't mean they're not going to bootleg kitchens, or bathrooms, or do whatever they're going to do to operate, and completely underground. They don't even need to do it with Airbnb, so that's one concern. But even before that, you know, we're in the, I don't have to tell anybody, we're in the middle of a horrible drought, and while it's desperate, I've also done, in my research with the short-term rentals, I've looked into the rental vacancy rates. In Ojai, they're abysmal. I mean, we really do need housing. We need available housing. I don't know that affordable housing is even on the table right now, but we do need available housing. However, we owe it to our residents who already live here to manage the resources that are in, in short supply, namely, water, and, and then the traffic considerations. The mapping that I've done of short-term rentals has brought up accommodations for 1,500 people in the valley. So, these people are already here, they're tourists, they're not residents, so I think we maybe need to plug that hole first, maybe that's a separate issue, but anyway, I think that you need to use, if you have the ability to look at water and traffic, I think you need to do so before moving forward really fast with this, with this idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wirick.
As a city councilperson, speaking individually, because this will be up for deliberation, I have two levels of fundamental disagreement with Mr. Palmer and the actions of the Ojai Valley Sanitary District Board. Number one, just reading the plain language of the law. SB 1069, accessory dwelling units shall not be considered new residential uses for purposes of calculating local agency connection charges or capacity charges for utilities, including water and sewer service. Government Code 65852.2, Division F1, a local agency shall not require the applicant to install a new or separate utility connection directly between the accessory dwelling unit and the utility, or impose a related connection fee or capacity charge. Section F2, second units, quote, "shall not be considered new residential uses for the purposes of calculating local agency connection charges or capacity charges for utilities, including water and sewer service." Government Code, section 66000, reads, local agency means a county, city, whether general law or chartered, city and county, school district, special district, authority, agency, any other municipal corporation, or district, or other political subdivision of the state. My concern is that we have a clear intent, and I think clear language in the law, and I think the sanitary districts are trying to find a way of wiggling out of that clear intent. I don't think that's responsible public policy behavior, in my opinion. We're talking about a significant impediment in terms of a lot of money that clearly the state legislature and the governor and housing and community development feel needed to be addressed. I've read the plain language. I think that what's happening is that the sanitary districts are trying to find a way of saying, well, that doesn't really apply to us, whereas the content is as clear as a bill, in terms of what the state is trying to do. The question becomes, what do we do? The question becomes, what do we do as a city in terms of permitting second units and whether or not, I think we have general plan issues, I think we have legal issues, in terms of whether or not we require will serves, which would in effect be acknowledging a separate utility when the law says we're not supposed to as a city agency. The city, you know, according to the plain language, the city cannot force an applicant to pay the fees or cooperate in terms of asking for a will serve. So I think we're going to, we're looking probably at, and I've talked to Mr. Summers about this, and I think it stands to reason, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, that legal minds are disagreeing on this matter. Is that fair?
That is correct. There are, as you will have all seen, this bill was not a paragon of clarity. Mr. Palmer's analysis is backed by his attorneys, and I'm sure their opinion is well reasoned. The city's opinion is different, as articulated by Councilmember Wirick, and is previously considered by the council, which the council will be considering in the future, and that dispute remains to be resolved.
So we will have to take this, we will be deliberating on this issue and deciding about how to proceed, and all I would say is that, and I know I'm out of time, but I think it's probably important that I continue for a bit with the chair's indulgence, that it's important that the, we look at our needs of our constituents first, and the intent of the law, and I'll give you one of the reasons that I'm particularly disturbed by the actions of the Ojai Valley Sanitary District. Two things about second units that are, this whole law that's important in terms of affordability. One is that, you know, there is a potential for neutral or reduced traffic impacts if we can actually get people that are commuting into this area, because they can't, we have a huge number of people statistically shown that commute into this area because they can't live here. If they could live here and not have to commute in here, we'd have less traffic impact from that, if we could actually find these people places to live and squeeze out the short-term rentals, which again, we're trying to do everything we can to do. Also, if you are in a position of not having to pay a huge connection fee, it becomes much more palatable for us to explore what kind of water-neutral requirements we could put on retrofits to primary residences when we also are permitting second units. That becomes a lot more palatable in terms of addressing both housing needs and conservation if we, in my mind, follow the clear intent of the state legislature, and not try to find a way to say, oh, yeah, we know what you're trying to do, but we don't, we have, we found out a way not to do it. I don't consider that responsible public policy, and I fundamentally disagree with the actions of the Ojai Valley Sanitary District in this regard, and I think our general plan requires us to aggressively explore our options in this respect. So just wanted, that's my comment.
Thank you. I don't have any other speakers' cards, would anybody else like to speak on this matter? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I am going to bring it back to the commission, and going to suggest that we, unless anybody has any other questions for staff, just...
I would just like to point out, if I may, thank you so much. I think there's, in, you know, I took the definitions from the original ordinance, I forgot to mention this, so if you just indulge me, and in doing that, there is the one on the House split, I think is the old definition, as pointed out yesterday to me, so, you know, again, there's just so many changes, so I know I will have to change that one, so don't get, don't get tripped up by that. There are some definitions, I tried to put as many as I could in, you know, again, the idea of making this very clear is when we actually do move something forward for the public, but I did notice, it was pointed out to me that that one's wrong.
It's still old. Okay, so maybe when we get to each category, I'll just look to you to see whatever you want to illuminate about that. Okay, so we have these five different categories of second units, and then we have the various aspects of the code that affect them. So the first one is permitted in zones, and my understanding is that the bill gives cities the right to include or eliminate zones as we wish, so I think we can move on to lot size, and then just look above and have a discussion about different zones and how we think these things fit in the different lot sizes, the lot size fit in particular zones. So with that, let's talk about minimum lot sizes. Anybody would like to begin?
I guess I'll start. First of all, we all know that there's already an existing ordinance on the books. You can build a second dwelling, you can for the last forever in the city of Ojai. So the idea that somehow we're passing this law to create, that somehow people are going to build more units, there's still obstacles in the way of that happening, one is economics. We had seven dwellings built, second dwellings built in the last three years, so we're averaging two per year, just keep that in mind, there's not a flood of people coming out building second dwellings, because they could do it now, nothing we've said or done can stop them at any given time. So with that said, I'm, I feel that what really should govern this is not so much the lot size, but the growth management allocation. And because there's such a big impediment to building second dwellings as far as cost, sewer hookup fees that may or may not apply, but now they do. The other impediments are the lack of streamlined permitting processes and the cost of acquisition And I have a question for staff on growth management allocation. Is there a way, can we say, can we limit the amount of second dwellings in the city of Ojai to an amount?
No, the city's general plan has adopted that, they're exempt. I mean, you're, you would be going past the zoning ordinance, which is the next layer down, and going into the housing element, the housing element identifies the last certified housing element that you would, that you would, you would remove that impediment, and that was what was done.
So you cannot restrict that?
You would be out of compliance with your housing element.
Okay, that's fine. Well, right now, we're looking at everything.
It's not that you couldn't do it, but you're just, you're just going fundamentally back in layers and making more complex.
There's also a direct provision on applying a growth management plan to a second unit.
Okay, right, I thought that was the case, I wanted to clarify that.
Such things. Now, that doesn't mean you can't impose effective limits, again, going back to which zones you select, the minimum lot size question, those things, but you can't apply the city's existing residential growth management program to accessory dwelling units.
Yeah, we can't say, we're only going to allow 10 per year, or something like that. Okay, well, good, we'll move on from that then. So seeing the impediments that are there, the question for affordable housing is creating an environment where building a second unit is more conducive, there's already huge impediments in doing it. We've, we're going to get to, you know, the laws on the books of vacation rentals, they're already illegal in the city of Ojai, you can already build a second dwelling now, and you cannot turn it into a rental unit. So with that said, I believe the state's minimum, is that still 5,000 square foot lot size for a second dwelling?
I don't think the city...
That was in, that was in the old Senate bill.
No, I don't think the state had a minimum lot size.
The state no longer has a minimum lot size.
They got rid of that?
Yes.
Okay.
The city could set one as desired by the commission and council.
So it's my opinion that what should, what should rule the minimum size is setbacks and lot coverage. If you can, and establishing a minimum, well, we have an efficiency dwelling unit minimum size of 220 square feet, so if you take a 220 square foot minimum size dwelling, you can look at a lot size that if they fulfill the, the lot coverage requirements and the setbacks, I believe they should be allowed to do a second dwelling. So that's my opinion on that.
Okay, so my only question, I guess, in terms of procedure, is we had as a commission come up with something far more conservative than that, and when we were at our last joint meeting, we were told that we could be as restrictive or more restrictive than what we had, and that was our direction, because we are now in a water crisis. So, you know, maybe this is just another open question for our first joint meeting with, you know, our new city council, that maybe we need this clarified again, but in any event, I'm just going to lay that out there as context for others to speak to if they wish. So anybody else like to go next? Commissioner Mark?
I'd just like to say, I think from just a practical point of view, I think Chester's point is a good one. If you can't meet the lot coverage and can't meet the setbacks, then you're not going to be able to do a second dwelling unit, and I think that, I think focusing on lot size is kind of a red herring, because I don't think that's really going to apply. I think what the limiting factor is going to be the coverage and the setbacks. So I, you know, we may just say, we don't care what the lot size is, but you have to meet all these other requirements.
I agree with that.
Commissioner Allen?
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm in agreement too, and generally, in our last round of discussion prior to all of this, we were kind of, you know, looking at that to a degree. I mean, lot size did come up, and I think we had agreed to maybe lower it from what it originally was, but I think that would handle the situation. I mean, in other words, that would dictate if you could do it or not, and also what size it's going to be.
So, if I can just interject, I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. So, so I don't know if you, if I made this clear or not, but when you had your conversations before, you were talking about meeting the parking and meeting all of the issues on-site, and you know that's no longer the case, correct? So fundamentally, if you're putting a 1,200 square foot house, which may be three bedrooms, you know, you may have more than one or two cars there, giving you the map, you need to understand that it's not just, I mean, I'm hearing that the unit and the unit fitting on the lot square, you know, the coverage, which is fine, but I just want you to understand that all that parking is going to go on the street, so that's where we'll all go. And again, you're taxed with looking at this, this whole thing from the general plan down that you can provide for transportation, water, and sewer, and then other than that, you know, but, so I just wanted to explain, it is a little different than how we had our conversation before, which I totally agree, I think we were all agreeing that lot coverage was really the important key pin on all this. Now, it's to the point that majority of Ojai will not, if you're doing a second unit, you will not be providing parking, and the street will have to absorb all that. And so I just want to make sure you understand that, because it's a little bit different situation now.
And that's a state requirement, correct?
That's a state requirement, so, so it gets down to what's, it gets to another factor of whether or not you think, you know, certain streets are in certain lot, you know, certain streets can handle, you know, additional cars, because at 640, what you originally wanted to do, move it forward, I think that's, that's very clear, that's a one-car unit. Now at 1,200, I don't know that, you know, statistically speaking, from a planning perspective, we would always think that that was more than one car, you know, you have, you know, a family living there, you're going to, you know, if we called out the statistics of normally a unit, and how many people in the general plan would then be in that unit, and then subsequently, how many people would be driving. As I, as I like to say, the state is now considering that if you're next to public, the reason they preclude, they restrict the city from providing on-street, off-street parking, excuse me, is because they're assuming people don't have cars, that you're using public transportation to get around your city, and then that public transportation then go to wherever your job is. That's why it's very clear that it has to be regularly scheduled public transportation. So I just want to make sure that you understand that now, if you're going, if you're going up to a 1,200 square foot unit, then that may be different in what, in what the traffic impacts were than when we originally had our conversation. Just a point of note, I'm sorry, I'm trying to say, I'm not trying to, I'm trying to point out the issues, and I just think that if you all feel that that, that size, it doesn't matter, you know, because you're going to be restricted down to 640, or you feel that 640 is going to be by just the size of the lot, then, then that answers that question. We, I would just like to have the recommendations crafted that you're from top down with the issues that you're looking at, because truly, all the restrictions that you're going to suggest all have to be kind of vetted out of the, what you take into consideration and why you're doing, they can't be arbitrary.
Okay, so on that note, I would just say, I don't agree that that's a good way to go, because for one thing, I think it's extremely unpredictable. The more you open it up that way, the harder it's going to be to make any kind of determination as to, how many might there be built? And I think that's a huge concern when we're talking about the scarcity of water. I mean, we don't really have an ability to go, okay, there's, there's this many lots, and then go lot to lot to lot to try to understand what's built, what could be built, how do we make any kind of thoughtful analysis as to what the impact of that decision will be, that, okay, go ahead as long as you just, you know, your guideline is maximum lot coverage. I just have no way to know how we're predicting how many more people we're accommodating under that kind of a scenario. And again, as Director Wald sort of points out, what does that, what does that look like on already congested streets with parking, when you're just shoving more parking on these streets that are already, to me, hazardous? There are so many cars jammed on Fulton and Drown, and above Grand as well, where, you know, kids come out between cars and nobody sees them, because they're just jammed in there, there's no off-street parking, and now there's none required. So I'm really concerned about that strategy. I, I think that if we stuck more to the larger lot, and by the way, the, the new attached dwelling within the, an existing space, okay, that already has no minimum lot size, so you could turn any house in the city potentially into a duplex. What does that look like? That's a, could be a huge impact. And what do we do about that? You know, can we, do we start eliminating by zone if we think that's too much? I mean, I just think it's, it's mushrooming very quickly, I think, and I don't know that we responsibly can use that tactic, because we can't really predict what the outcome is in terms of impacts. Commissioner Powers?
Yeah, I want to thank Director Wald for this great matrix, and my considerations are honoring what our general plan of the city says, and secondarily, addressing affordable housing. So if I look at, well, first I have a question for Mr. Summers, and that is, just, and I think I understood what Director Wald said earlier regarding interpretation of the new, new Senate bill, but does this, does the city have the right to lower the maximum from 1,200 down to something else and put a restriction on it?
My opinion is that the city does not have that power, that it must set the maximum at 1,200, the minimum at 1,200 square feet, which it could also set as the maximum, but I don't think anyone could build lower, but I, in other words, the minimum maximum the city can set. In other words, to make it clearer, as I read the bill, the city must permit up to 1,200 square feet by right, provided it meets the other applicable requirements for that type of unit. I don't think the city can continue to maintain the 640 square foot unit limit that it had previously. That advice was provided to the council, the council acted on that advice in the urgency ordinance, which kicked it up to 1,200 square feet, or 50% of the size of the primary unit in certain contexts, to be exact. The new provision of the urgency ordinance as adopted is that a detached second unit can be up to 1,200 square feet, and an attached second unit can be up to whichever is smaller, 1,200 square feet or 50% of the size of the primary unit, including basements and attics... attics, but excluding the garage, and that calculation of 50%. There is language in the bill that would, that could support another, another reading. I disagree with applying that other reading, and my recommendation is not to do so. My recommendation is just that, it's a recommendation, it's legal advice, the commission and the council remain free to move otherwise.
So can I ask for a point of clarification? So are you saying that if a person has a thousand-square-foot home, I'm sorry, lean into, if a person has a thousand-square-foot primary dwelling unit, they can then build accessory dwelling unit at 1,200 square feet, therefore having one that's actually larger than primary, and still caught an accessory dwelling unit?
If detached and if otherwise compliant with the restrictions, then yes. That is how I read the state code.
But they have to meet the setback.
You lean into the microphone?
Got to turn, got to lean in.
I'll finish later.
But they have to meet the setback requirements.
Yes, if they meet the setbacks and the lot coverage and all the other requirements.
So the most congested streets, for the most part, have the smallest lots, and if they have to meet the setback requirements, and they can't exceed the FAR, that's going to, in some manner, restrict that.
Those restrictions will restrict us, that max unit size somewhat, but
Right, if you're in a little small lot, and you have a 20-foot setback in the back, you're probably going to have this thing attached to your house, and that's going to limit the size.
I feel like- Commissioner Powers is in the middle of his, sorry.
Sorry.
Carry on.
Thank you. So to clarify, so I make sure I know what you're saying, Mr. Summers. I've heard you, I heard you say, "This is my opinion, and then this is how I read it." Are those synonymous?
Yes.
Like, is your interpretation, so what I heard you say-
My opinion is my interpretation.
Got it. And then others are interpreting it differently, but you're in disagreement of that? I'm just trying to get clear on that.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and then the state guidelines coming down later this month might give more clarification in terms of guidelines to what those interpretations might-
The guidelines may clarify the issue. I'll caution, the guidelines aren't going to be written by an agency favorable to imposing limits on second units. They're not going to likely be the, in that vein.
Okay.
And note that the guidelines will be the draft guidelines. The state must proceed through an administrative process of at least three to six months to convert the draft guidelines to final guidelines.
So what I'm grappling with is wanting to supply affordable housing to our residents, and 1,200, if people can, no matter what, and there's no restrictions, build a 1,200-square-foot dwelling, is that supplying affordable housing? And are we meeting those two criteria? So I'm just saying my opinion of wanting to make sure we're supplying affordable housing, and if the city somehow wants to put in some kind of regs, regulations, or something, or strong suggestions, to make sure we're, we're supplying affordable housing. The water issue for me, and although this was a discussion in another planning commission, the water issue for me isn't that much of an issue. If we put in new building, water-wise building standards, I would hope that the new council looks at our suggestions, that anything new that's built takes on water-wise design in, in terms of gray water, and, and, you know, low flush toilets, and everything that can go into the design that would make that neutral.
Commissioner Powers, thank you so much. Do you have a specific opinion about the lot size, as all of that pertains to lot size, and how you envision, do you really, the kind of, we're going to try to, you know, consider each of these sections of this matrix? So some commissioners feel that there shouldn't be a limit on lot size, some of us, I feel that, that these things should be confined to bigger lots. So we have kind of a fundamental difference there, and just wondering what your opinion is in terms of whether or not there should be a minimum lot size such as you see in the matrix there. We can come back too, if you want to.
You know, that's, you know, no, I have some thoughts on that. It's, it's just, there's, different neighborhoods have mixed different lot sizes, so you might have a, a small lot next to an acre lot, possibly, so how do we, how do we account for that? Because there might be some neighborhoods that don't have a lot of congestions in terms of street parking, because the safety on the streets and the congestion of street parking is a big concern for me. So I'm not sure how to rectify that lot size.
Commissioner Nolan?
I think what the direction several of us have just mentioned, and tonight we're not making a decision. I think it's more, let's put things on the table, let's look at our options.
Not making a decision? We are making a decision tonight.
Well, we are, but, I mean, we're not making the final vote tonight. But I think, to me, the thing with a lot, if you have a lot size, and you have setback restrictions, and you have buildable space restriction, that, whether you have a quarter-acre lot, and a one-acre lot, and exterior, that's going to dictate if you can even add an accessory dwelling, or what size it's going to be, and, it gets back to the other thing, if you look at our past history and the cost of doing it, not everyone is going to do it. So I personally don't feel like we're going to have a glut, and I do want to meet the housing needs, and I think, you know, when you put all that information together, I'm hoping, including responsible water, planning, and the building stage, that it's all doable. I would also say that, to me, like, the next step would be, and we had this in the past, we had a list of all the lots in the city, and there were so many, you know, hundred in this square footage range, so many in this range, what have you. If we applied what we might think the setbacks would be, if they were, if they would change, or if we used the existing ones, and, and that information, it would kind of give us an idea of, like, okay, we have this, this many lots, and those lots could essentially have a second or an accessory dwelling unit within this square footage range. So I think we could kind of come up with a ballpark. I mean, that's just one approach, and I'm, and I'm listening and hearing to what you're saying, we may want to look at a couple different approaches.
I just don't know how you would do that unless you knew what was already built on the lot. That, that would be the hard part.
What was built on the lot?
Right, we have-
Size.
We wouldn't have, we don't have plot plans for every single lot in the city.
No, but you do, I mean, you have some information where I think we could do, kind of like a baseline, no?
I, I don't think so. I don't, I mean, we would have, we would have-
Right.
Yeah, she says, see, okay, so, I think that, I think you may have, you know, like, there's lots of information on the size of the house, but it's not necessarily going to tell you where that placement of the house is. I mean, we work with this stuff all the time in the city of Ojai, and unfortunately, I know this goes to sound like a broken record, but Ojai has a lot of lots that aren't conforming to the minimum standards. Whoever wrote the zoning ordinance didn't write it for the town that's out here, and we see them all the time, where houses don't have the five-foot setback on one side.
Right, I know, we've seen it too.
The setbacks don't mirror the, the actual footprint out there. I'm a little nervous about you guys talking about kind of rigid setbacks, because that's really not what's out there, and then you're really going to preclude a lot of people from doing this. The setbacks are really difficult in this town, you know? It really kind of says in here, on a lot of, a lot of the different categories, the setbacks really need to be down to what is fire protection.
Right, I agree with that.
I think lot coverage is a really good threshold, I think that's really great, but, you know, I looked at a plot plan today of an older home, where, you know, the driveway didn't even match up with the garage, and they got a bay window sticking out in the garage, and they're, they're kind of wedged in here, and I think that it's, it's difficult, I don't know that we would be able to tell how, if you set down reels, rigid setbacks, and so we have, right now, we have a setback that's required from the house to a detached accessory, and it gets bigger as you put openings and windows in it. And it, and it can end up being 15 feet apart, and that's really prohibitive, you know, because now all of a sudden, you're, those are very old-school separation, they're, they're meant to keep you, the fire separation, et cetera, et cetera, and, and so, that's one thing we, we struggle with, with people, is, you know, people want to get a detached accessory structure, whatever it is, and they still want to have some open space in their backyard, and we still want them to have some. I think you guys saw in variance where we talked about that earlier, early this year. And so I think if we're going to work on the setbacks, then we shouldn't just assume that the ones that are in the code are going to work.
Right.
We probably need to go back into the code and kind of say, you know, if you're doing a detached accessory structure, you know, what is really reasonable to have it from your neighbors and from your own house? Obviously, the idea is to have light and air come into the house, but obviously, it's probably better to have a smaller setback to your own self than impeding others, you know? So I think maybe we would want to look at those.
Good.
But I think that the setbacks that we have right now might really kind of be an impediment if we just said those as we left them carte blanche as they are now. I think that's why I'm, I'm worried about, I mean, in both ways, I'm just trying to help you both ways with it.
And thank you for that information, and I, I get what you're saying.
Right.
And maybe it is looking at new setbacks, or maybe it's no setbacks, and we're just looking at the lot coverage.
Well, I think you can do lots of things, like you can do, you know, three foot, I've worked in cities that have had three feet with no windows and no overhangs. I mean, the idea is, you know, you don't want to shed water on your neighbor's property, and you don't want to open the window and be noisy next to them, and those kinds of things, and you can look at those kinds of things and kind of help, I mean, again, the idea is to make it happen, if there's not a good reason to not make it happen, and really those things come down to, you know, the fundamental things we provided in the staff report that you can choose. So we could try to do some, we could take a few lots in and among different neighborhoods, the way the city's divided up, and we could kind of just give you a typical, a typical template, or maybe we could pull site plans, share from all the compliance units we've done, right? They've all come in with site plans. Would you like us to do that, to kind of see what people are doing out there? I mean, it's kind of anecdotal, but we could provide this for you.
Or maybe finish our discussion first, and see if everyone's in consensus before we say yes or no.
Commissioner Jagiell.
Yeah, I want to address affordable housing a little bit, and the idea of affordable by design. One of the reasons for allowing a second dwelling up to or as low as 220 square foot, as the code allows, is that's what's probably going to be the affordable housing size, you might say. So it's affordable by design. The smaller the unit, the more affordable it's going to be. If we allow second dwellings based on lot coverage and setbacks, and maybe a redefined setback, it allows for the smaller houses to do these smaller efficiency units, and that, those are affordable by design. So I just wanted to note that. Otherwise, if we're allowing them only on larger lots, people are going to have a tendency to build larger units. So that's, that's what I have to say about that.
So my question to staff would be, then are we allowed to restrict the size of an ADU based on the lot size? So-
You can't directly restrict the size, in my opinion, but you could effectively restrict the size via those lot coverage and other requirements. There's a distinction I'm drawing there, that I can make clear, if I'm seeing little puzzled faces. The distinction is that you, the, you can't set a, a hard number lower than 1,200 square feet, or 50% of the primary unit for, attached, as the straight proposed size of unit against that number. However, you can rely, if, if the commission and council wish, could rely on setbacks and lot coverage, and the minimum lot size, et cetera, to impose a smaller restriction on the effective size of accessory dwelling units, if that is the wish of the commission, and then is adopted by the council.
So that might attain the goal Commissioner Jagiell was just speaking about, of a smaller unit that would, by design, be an affordable.
If approved by the council, yes, that would accomplish the goal you've articulated.
One of, just to expouse a little bit on Chair, the Chair's question to me about the lot size. One, one concern I have about not, is throwing out the lot size, is, has to do with second, second story on top of a, on top of a home, that if it's a smaller lot size, and a second unit goes up, a second story goes up on a home, privacy issues come up for me. You know, if you're right next to a neighbor, and it's a smaller lot, and you put up a second story, and lot size doesn't have anything to do with it, then I have someone looking directly into my backyard.
However, you do know that second stories require a, do they not require, they still require a DRB, right?
With an exception. To make it plain for all, this was another element modified by the urgency ordinance by the council. The new requirement is that a proposed new second story to contain an accessory dwelling unit requires designer view by the planning commission, which could take into account those concerns, in terms of setting the design and ensuring that there's adequate light access and adequate other requirements apply. However, if the proposed second unit is entirely within the building envelope of an existing legal second story, of an existing legal primary unit, and has independent exterior access from the existing legal primary unit, and has side and rear setbacks adequate for fire safety, as determined by the director, then designer view is not required.
Right.
And that's, that element is now in, to give the citation, Ojai Municipal Code, section 10 to 1709 subdivision C11.
So I guess regarding lot size, I have considerations about that, about getting rid of lot size. I, I think it might be an, an important topic not to throw out.
I want to, yeah, the, one other thing about lot size is, I haven't heard we can't do this, but maybe Mr. Summers will have a disagreement of opinion on this, but we, since we, we could, could we not adjust our zoning to reflect lot size, to do something more surgical? So we could take an R1 zone and call it R1 5,000 to 8,000 square feet, or something like that, if we did decide to work with it surgically? Because as I understand, right now, for instance, these, being able to turn a single-family home into a duplex is not related to lot size, unless we eliminate from an entire zone. Is that right?
As I read the state law, the zone doesn't matter. For the requirement to convert, and I'll, I'll be precise, a proposed accessory dwelling unit entirely contained within the existing space of a legal primary residence with, or legal accessory structure, with independent exterior access from that legal primary residence, and with side and rear setbacks sufficient for safety, which I think is the provision you're referring to by converting to a duplex, if that provision, if those standards are met, it doesn't matter what zone it is in, because the provision that allows the city to set some zones but not others for accessory dwelling units comes in subdivision, subdivision A of Government Code, section 65852 dot 2, and the section I just read you that has this exception, begins notwithstanding subdivisions A through D, a local agency shall ministerially approve an application for a unit that meets the requirements I stated. As I read it, the city does not have the power to limit units that are in that exception by zone. That applies everywhere, provided those requirements are met.
Do you think that others have a difference of opinion about that?
I have not seen any other city apply it differently, but I haven't done a complete survey of every city in the state.
Okay.
I think that's, that example is the example of why it ended up being so hard for me to do this, because it basically says, you can do this, and then further on, as you read, it will say, but if you do this, you can't. And that's what Matt and I have been struggling with, is in trying to give it an understanding, and I think all we're just, that's what makes it really difficult, is you, they give it to you of the right, and then they take it away when you have an exception.
So regardless of that, you're saying that structure of a second- So regardless of that, you're saying that, um, um, structure of a second unit would not, there's no limitation you can put on lot size, because that's our, that's how it's defined, and then you can't eliminate by zone?
That is how I read the law, correct. But again, as noted with the questions from Commissioner Powers, my comments are legal advice. The city, the commission is free to recommend that the council, uh, approach it differently.
Okay. Well, I think this is probably going to remain an open question. I think Mr. Powers, Commissioner Powers' point about the privacy that people expect in smaller neighborhoods and smaller lots, that the privacy that they've come to rely on, and the reason they bought in those zones is because they don't expect to have somebody looking down on them. But anyway, if anybody else has anything else to say, otherwise I think we'll move on to, um, leave that an open question. We have a disagreement on that one, but...
Actually, I think we have a consensus. We have, if we take a vote on it, I think you'll find that. I think we, as a commission, more agree with removing, um, the impediment of a lot size. I think just you...
I don't think that's a consensus. That is...
Well, why don't we ask?
Well, consensus would be, um...
We can ask.
We can certainly ask, and happy to do that, but consensus is, um, an agreement across the board.
Well, let's, let's see what...
Do we need to, do we, are we going to be making a motion on all this today, or?
Um, so...
What are we going to do at the end of the day?
So maybe we should talk about that. Do, huh, maybe we should back up then and look at whether or not people feel that, um, just based on where we're at so far, that this is going to require, um, further information, further investigation, and whatnot.
Yeah, because our, our agenda for tonight just says review and discuss, so that's what we're doing right now.
Okay. That's what I thought we were doing, too. Anybody else have a problem with that? Okay. Um, so, John, do you want to weigh in on your final thoughts about lot size? You want, in favor of...
Oh, I just wanted to, you were mentioning, um, that you were concerned about we may not be able to keep track of how many units are actually proliferating in the community? Is that what you're concerned is regarding water?
Yeah, just, yeah, just that, that, um, we, we are in an, an extreme water crisis for which we don't have any particular solution at this point. And I just think that, you know, one of the things our general plan requires us amongst other things, like keeping open spaces open and not building over every inch of green space in the city. Um, it, it requires us to be mindful of whether we have a sustainable plan for, you know, providing water for our citizens. And I, I don't think we have any plan right now. Um, and so, the idea that we are, um, kind of willy-nilly going, well, let's just build a whole bunch more stuff without having kind of some analysis or some clarity about how much we're building, to me seems irresponsible. And so, to me, um, I, I can know how many lots there are that are X square footage. Um, I'm not saying this is the only way to go about it, but I, this is at least a more predictable way to go about it than what, than just going with lot coverage, which I think is completely unpredictable way to go and concerns me.
Okay. I think Ray's point was a good one, that any new dwellings built are going to be to fairly exacting standards in terms of water conservation. So, I don't know that it's going to add a huge load to what we already have.
We don't have any water standards right now.
No, and we don't, and, I mean, that's, that's a huge problem that I don't know if we can solve.
Right, and how long does that get delayed? Commissioner Corbin?
Well, we can make all the water standards that we want, but we're not going to solve the water problem. The 22 or whatever water companies in this area are probably at some point going to have to be mandated by the state to solve this water problem, because I don't see any agreement. So I would say that if we have water-wise building restrictions and we assume that the, well, that the setbacks and the lot size as they stand will probably restrict the sizes of things as they go along. I also feel that...
Wait, sorry, what did you mean by that? Because lot, you're saying no lot size?
Well, what we talked about is that, that, you know, you're not going to be able to probably build a 1,200 square foot unit on a 5,000 square foot lot, depending on how, I mean, if you have setbacks, um, and, you know, we're just assuming that every single lot's going to wind up with a 1,200 square foot house and three cars and, you know, God knows how many bathrooms. I don't really think that's going to happen. But whatever we decide is not etched in stone. It's not like we never have the right to go back and review it. You can put a sunset clause on it and say, let's see what happens in two years, or let's look at it, you know, in one year and see if we've got 7,000 permits out there for, you know, then, then we say, well, there's a problem. Let's stop, let's take a look. I don't think that's going to happen. It's way, way too expensive to build anything in this town. And even with restrictions on permitting and making this easier, it's so expensive to build anything in this town. It's, it's going to limit a lot, um, especially if the water district is allowed to say, well, you know, we're not a local agency, so we can still charge you $17,000 to build something. I don't understand who they think that's talking to if it's not talking to them.
Sanitary District, okay. Commissioner Jagiello, I think I understand your point of view. I think the commission understands. But do you want to say anything else about that? No? Okay. Commissioner Nolan? Okay. Commissioner Powers?
I, I, what's missing a little bit for me, um, because Commissioner Corbin just mentioned a, a 5,000 square foot lot, you know, that someone's not going to build 12, a 1,200 square foot AD, ADU on it.
Well, if you do the math of the front setback, the back setback, the side, you know...
Well, that's what I was just going to say. So what's missing for me is some data on that, because my mind doesn't grasp, okay, there's a 5,000 square foot lot, what's the setback? You know, how big is, uh, an average house on, on that size lot, and then how, how big of a ADU can be built there? So, for me, sometimes I need some hard data, because maybe you can squeeze a thousand square foot house and a 1,200 square foot ADU on a 5,000 square foot lot.
You can.
I wouldn't want that.
But you can do that. That is not going to violate lot coverage.
Well, no, not really, because if you do the math, if you, 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 first of all, can only, um, do a 1,200 square foot, oh, I guess the 12, 1,200 square foot is the minimum. Okay, I guess. It would have to cover the lot coverage if it's a...
Do you want me to help?
Is it 50% of the...
Hey, no, so it's, so...
Square foot?
Thirty-five. So it's 35 in, I just looked this up. So it's 35 in most zone, in most residential zones. It's 60% lot coverage in the R3.
Yeah.
So it's, so it's 35, um, it's not, there's no lot coverage in the R04, the R02, and the R01 says, says not applicable. So you've got three, three zones that don't have it. The R01 and a half has got 35%. The R0, 35%, R1, 35%, R2, 35%. R3 has 60% coverage. If you take a 5,000 square foot lot and you take 35% coverage, that's 1,750. And I provided the definition for you for what lot coverage is, and that means that a percentage of the total site area occupied by structures. Structures or building coverage includes the primary structure, all accessory structures, carports, garage, paddy covers, sheds, trash, blah, 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 accessory dwelling units, and architectural features, chimneys, balconies, decks, above the first floor, porches, and stairs. Okay? So that's what it is. And it says it's, uh, coverage is measured from exterior wall to exterior wall, so what we're not, even though you're taking some porches, you're not taking eaves, right? You're not taking the roof area. Um, so that gives you an idea. So, so, um, at 1,750, um, 35% of 5,000, 1,750, and, you know, a fourth, a 400 square foot garage, you're going to have, um, maybe the primary unit be, you know, whatever that is, 1,300 square feet, and you'd have to do either up...
Up of that home.
You'd have to go up. You'd have to convert your garage, you know? And the, I believe in the co- code here, it says, it's kind of got some strange language, but it says if you demo the garage, you can replace it anywhere on the site with covered or uncovered. I'm assuming that kind of rule would, we would apply to, um, the demolition would also apply maybe to covered. So you may get like a 400 square foot lot and then parking in the front. But, you know, for every incremental that you get bigger than it, the story's going to be different. But that's kind of, does that give you kind of an idea?
Yeah, on a 6,000 square foot lot, you can have 2,100 square feet of house, of house. That's a lot. That's two houses on a 6,000 square foot lot, which is little. And little, that's, that's, the property's down and drowned on Fulton. Those are little lots. And then you got how many...
Are you not limited to the, uh, 50% of the main residence?
No, you're not.
It's attached.
Or 1,200, whichever is smaller. But that's only if it's attached, not if it's detached.
Right.
There's three different categories that bear, bear bearing in mind. Um, really five is articulated on page four of eight of Attachment B, but they break down into three subcategories. New, detached, attached, or inside the structure. And bear those in mind when you're thinking about these different requirements. Because lot coverage, for example, only matters for the first two. It only matters for new, um, or converted detached structure and a newer converted attached structure. But it doesn't matter for entirely within the residence, because the house is already built.
There are lots of small houses on those streets, because they're small lots. And then you can put a 1,200 square foot guest house on a small lot.
But you can't build on the whole 6,000 square foot lot.
No, that was 35%. It's 2,100.
No, but you still can't build on it. You've got a 25-foot setback in the back, you've got a 20-foot setback in the front, you've got 12 on one side, and you've got five on the other. So deduct that and then see what's left.
Well...
It's smaller.
Can we do that?
Yeah, great.
Remember, we were talking, we were saying 60 by 100 was the normal width of the lot?
Oh, sorry. Mike, is the normal width of the lot, am I doing 50 by 100 or 50 by 120?
No, that's 5,000.
I know, 50 by 120?
Okay.
I don't know. Give me some statistics.
Do, do, um, 100 by 60.
Okay. Right? This is what I'm doing? That's what I'm doing?
Perhaps a short recess to conclude the session.
Yeah, I'm, I'll, I'll, I'll be... You guys can keep on talking. I'll be right there.
Okay, well...
You did hear that she said there's no limit to lot coverage on all the places like Foothill, Signal Street, or Simmon Hill. There is no lot coverage.
There's no lot coverage at all.
I'm sorry that I haven't pointed out that out before, and I apologize. We probably would want to talk about adding lot coverage to those. Um, again, that, that, I think that's just because they're so large, you know, they have, they're very large properties. I don't know why that's not in there. I'm sorry, but, um...
So Matt, uh, is it, so we're, part of this has to do with that 1,200 square foot, you know? Of course, that's another line item, but it does apply to this line item in a big way. Um, on a smaller lot, we cannot put a limit on the size that we can, like, for instance, that 1,200 has to apply across the board on everything.
That's my assessment.
But that's your assessment, and we're, we're, okay.
Kathleen, I mean Director Walde.
I'm sorry, yeah. 2,150. So that's like 100 minus 25 in the front, 25 in the back. Um, and that leaves 50, and then 60 divided, or minus 17, which is the...
So you can do a 2,150 square feet of house.
That's 43 times 50.
Okay.
Um, so I do think what I need to do the next time is just really flush out, um, we've been focusing on some of the smaller lots in all our discussions, um, because that was where the real concern was, the smaller lots. And so I apologize, I can then come up with where the gaps are in the regular code for lot coverage, et cetera, et cetera. Um, keep in mind that the definition of lot coverage can be altered. You know, that's what it says right down the code. Um, that goes outside the, the second unit, or, I'm sorry, ADU, back into the regular definitions. So we'd want to make it the same. So if you, if you, if there are things that, um, you know, you, you want to take out of there, like, uh, architectural features, balconies, chimneys, and things like that, you know, that you think are like, um, prohibitive, we could discuss that. But again, um, my apologies for not catching on that there wasn't lot cover. So I'll, I can fix that and bring that back to you and give you each zone, district, and let you know what the, what the parameters are. And, and we can take a gen, I, I think we've just been focusing on the small lots, because we thought that's where the congestion was. You know, the traffic and the water and the, et cetera, those types of issues that we've been tasked with looking at. Okay.
Okay. So that remains an open question. Yes? Okay. So, um, setbacks. Do you guys want to weigh in on, uh, Director Walde or Mr. Summers? Any comments you want to make about setbacks before we consider?
Just, I think that, that from what I read, Matt, you chime in, that it seems like the real focus needs to be on making sure the setbacks aren't excessive, but that really just addressed the focus, which is the fire separation, correct, Matt? And so, um, I think that the code, again, I just think that we should really think about where it gets back. And I can provide, again, this is a whole I haven't proven, provided for you, and I thought I was doing, I mean, this report got pretty unwillingly, um, the actual setbacks that are out there between accessory and the primary unit, and then you can address whether or not you want to make those, um, change those. And so I'll provide those two for you, um, because I think really the focus is on just the fire separation, um, and for, for this type of thing. I think one of the areas that's going to be really hard for me to, to, um, provide you guidance on is, is the idea of, you know, there is, I mean, clearly what's going to happen here is people are going to be building or could maybe possibly build a necessary, um, uh, structure with in mind that eventually they may convert it. So they may do it incrementally, you know, and they, because this clearly provides some guidance that, you know, you can do this, and then subsequently it becomes easier the more you do. So a person may have a guest house, and that may be the first step they do. And then later on, they may say, hey, now I want to convert it. You know, they, they don't have to go the whole full, you know, deal. I think that's what we're seeing here. You could do this, and it could do that, and they can move on. That's how, it's kind of an incremental thing. And so, one of the things is just to make sure that when a person's doing a guest house or doing accessory structure, that we, we make it so that it's easy for them to move up. You know, first you build the structure, then you make it livable, and now you may make it a unit. And I think that is what's going to happen, and I think that's what is encouraging.
Okay, thank you. So, as far as, maybe the commission can weigh on this. As far as setbacks and lot coverage, it seems like we have some open questions there, and more, we need more data before we can. Should we wait? Do we want to weigh in on that, or do we want to wait till we actually have more data such there? Yes, Commissioner Corbin?
Um, according to, uh, the new legislation, are we allowed to enforce the minimum lot size that you can't build a second unit unless you have 10,900 square foot? We can't do that, can we?
Yes, we can.
Can we?
I think the city can impose a minimum lot size with the one exception being conversion of an existing, uh, legal prime, interior space within an existing legal primary residence or interior space within an existing legal accessory structure. But for new building on the ground, whether attached or detached, then you can apply the minimum lot size requirement.
Okay, all right.
If so desired.
Thank you.
Okay. So do we want to weigh in on setbacks and lot coverage since we have some gaping holes in the data? Commissioner Jagiello?
Yeah, I think that the, those three are very much connected to each other. The minimum lot size, the setbacks, and the lot coverage. And I do think we need to do some more work on that. Um, I would encourage staff to, uh, do a little research to, uh, look at some options, because, you know, we could redefine setbacks and lot coverage in a way that makes sense to, uh, allow for, uh, and we won't have to restrict it to just lot size. So there, that may be an option. So I'd like to see that done and look at that once the data comes.
And once we have that information, who knows? We may say, oh, we, we may want to restrict some lot size.
Maybe lot size, yes, mhm.
But having that information is going to help us make the decision.
Okay. All right. Well, then, let's move on to height. Maybe that'll be the one thing that we don't have to fuss about. I don't know, just a guess. Anybody have a strong feeling about height? Okay. Um, so essentially, we're just staff, uh, Mr. Summers and Ms. Walde, we're just talking about, um, the height as, as it exists in the current code, right? Yep, okay. Um, stories, any, um, anything you want to weigh in on there? You two? No?
Yeah, I mean, just to bear in mind the point that's, I think, made at the very end of the table, um, the designer viewpoint. You know, I, I think the city could...
The designer viewpoint, you know, I, I think the city could, um, act to require all accessory dwelling units except for conversion of interior space of existing structures to only be single story. Or as is presently the case under the urgency ordinance and the existing code, as those fit together, allow for second story second units provided they're approved by the planning commission via design review with the exception for second story second, second story accessory units within the existing interior space of a primary residence or accessory structure, with those other caveats I've read before.
Isn't that how it's written? Isn't that kind of what, what the matrix sort of reflects now?
Yes, that, exactly what I just stated is what's reflected in the matrix. I just call it out because the stories discussion also ties back to the designer review discussion.
Okay, yeah, exactly. Commissioner Corbin?
So the second, so an accessory dwelling unit on a second floor over an existing garage would require a design review permit?
If it's new above that garage, yes.
Right, if there's not something already-
So to put it in concrete terms, if you just had a first story garage and you want to build a second story accessory dwelling unit above it, then that would require a design review and there's special rules for the setbacks for that.
Right.
But if you had an existing garage and a second story workshop space above it, there was conditioned space and you wished to convert that, that second story conditioned workshop into an accessory dwelling unit, then provided it met the other requirements, you could do so without design review.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to point out, I, I do think that, um, we do a lot of design review and there's a lot of parameters we look at and we do design review, which I think a lot of them aren't really applicable to second units. You know, they just really aren't. And I think that, um, regardless of whether it's a second story or not, the, the commission may want to just consider having some baseline things in there for, you know, compatible. We've seen how lack of guidance there is for people coming in and, and, you know, the design review permit talks about traffic and light and signage and there's all these things which really wouldn't be applicable to a second unit. I mean, that, that's, that's kind of, if you're saying it's okay to be there and then you're just saying the design review is for color compatibility. It might be really nice if we had some, some straightforward guidelines. Again, since we're working on this, and what does make it a little bit easier, I think if you look at the 601 Crestview thing and how the public sees those kind of guidelines and how, you know, the commission sees them and it would be nice if you just put down what would be applicable. It has the, if it's attached to a, to a accessory unit and it does, and it's not seen by the street, you know, maybe no balconies or open doors to have noise infiltrate onto the, you know, things of those natures would be practical instead of maybe, um, and very cut and dry. I just hesitate to get, again, the public back in a black box where they, you know, again, we're trying to move these things through and that's what we've been pushed through this state. And while we, while we want to make sure that it's compatible, it would be nice if we just gave some parameters to the public and not just have it be a black box for them.
Can, can we then include that with, along with these open questions around zones and lot coverage and things like that? Make it part of, you know, here's what it is and here might be some suggested ideas of things you need to consider? Because right now I don't, that's too many things for us to wing right now.
I think so, but again, like, because the second units are unique and that we're looking at just certain parameters in order to provide guidance or design guidelines, you know, they're not, it's not an open book like the rest of the design review is, I think they just need to be more-
Carved out.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's include that.
I can make one comment on that for your, for your, for your help. I think the, some of the key elements there are windows, decks and balconies facing the, the five-foot setback.
Either or.
Yeah, or, yeah, the, the close step, the close setback.
I agree with that.
Good, okay, um. Did we do stories? I think we did stories.
Yes, we did.
Okay, max floor area, I have a question about this. So this is based on, um, the, the, um, the rendering of your opinion, Mr. Summers, that 1,200 square feet is the, the by right size?
Yes.
Okay.
With noted caveats about 50% of the primary unit.
Yeah, yeah, so if it were determined at some later date that, that, um, opinion was either, say the city council decided not to square with that decision or whatever, then-
As is their right.
Okay, then this max floor area is really just based on, on whatever that, the answer to that question is?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so right now there's not much we can do with this, right? It just is what it is based on?
If the commission wished, you could recommend that the council take a, um, take the stance that it should be something different than the number that is there. And the commission has the right to ask the council to do that. As is noted, the council did consider these and adopt the urgency ordinance that accomplished those timeline, those numbers. But it is within the commission's right to ask the council to effectively reconsider that decision.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cegiello?
Yeah, I would like to have the council consider, uh, I want to encourage the smaller units. That's, that's my thing, you know, we have an efficiency unit of 220 square feet. That can, that can solve a lot of affordable housing issues by design. And what happens when you have a minimum of, you have a maximum of 12, again, you, you're not encouraging smaller units. So it's hard for me to imagine that 1,200 square foot house, a second dwelling is going to be put on a smaller lot. Uh, it's, that's a, that's just hard to imagine that that would be the interpretation of the law. Especially, it would, it just, it just seems, it doesn't seem right. But we'll, we'll wait to hear from that. But I would like to see some more attention be put on the minimum and being able to somehow, uh, make a recommendation. I think that probably falls to lot coverage again and setbacks. Because once you're within that parameter, that, that dictates the size of the structure, so. That's, that's my opinion. I like to see, I like to see some, I like to make sure that that is an accurate interpretation.
Staff can provide another cell row in here of minimum floor area, I'm sorry. I mean, it wasn't just another thing that, that's why I wanted to make this a working draft so that it's very clear to someone and it's not interpreted later on that, you know, you can't do a small unit.
Right.
So we will put that in there.
Exactly, I'd like to really encourage that or at least have them-
I just think it's really, it's why we're trying to do a matrix, just to say, yes, you can go small.
The city has the power to set a minimum size for accessory dwelling units approvable by right under these provisions. The city also has the power to incentivize or encourage smaller units through relaxing one or more other standards.
What would be an example of that?
An example would be if design standards are adopted, you relax them for smaller units. Or another example might be, um, you completely eliminate parking requirements for smaller units. Or another example, if that's too extreme, may, would be to allow smaller setbacks for smaller units. A variable setback requirement based on unit size, for example. Just ideas if you wished to recommend to the council ways to incentivize smaller units that are presumed affordable by design.
Okay, well, I would, I'd, I'd like to see a, a different interpretation on the, um, the 1,200 square foot by right. I'd rather, I'd rather talk to a different attorney, sorry, Mr. Summers. No offense.
You can always go larger.
No. Uh, anybody else?
So my understanding is, I mean, the state is requiring us to allow 1,250 square feet.
That's under, that's, we, as we said at the beginning, it's, it's a matter of, that is how Mr. Summers has interpreted it. And there are other parties, other attorneys who disagree with that. And so that, in my mind at least, is an open question. And again, it's, um, what, what Mr. Summers is saying is that we have the ability to at least urge the council one way or another on that point, um, since it is an interpretation. You know, whether or not, what I'm saying is I would like to argue for a, 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 a different interpretation that allows for that max size to be lowered by right, what you can have by right. Again, because the larger it gets, uh, there, there is more incentive to build a larger unit because you can rent it for more, which then defeats the purpose of what this bill is intended to do, which is to, um, help people who need more affordable units, let's say attainable units, I think that's a better word. You know, have them be built. And, you know, it, it's, so, that's what I think, so, I don't know if you, anybody else has a, Commissioner Nolan?
Yeah, I have a comment, um, and this has to do with the 1,200 square feet. You know, in addition, if you have a family that's looking for possibly affordable housing, maybe that 1,200 square feet is something that they would need, they would need more size. Once again, we can't dictate what the property owner, how they're going to build it out and how much they're going to charge. You know, we're, we're assuming with everything we do here that some of this housing stock will be affordable. But, um, so I'm not necessarily opposed to the 1,200 square feet for that reason, that, you know, the smaller the space, the less people that are going to live in it. But if you had a family, you, the 1,200 may be needed and they may need, you know-
And that's affordable to them.
Yeah.
I think that gets back to our earlier discussion about lot coverage and setbacks. There again, if you have a really small lot, it's going to be really hard to get a 1,200 square foot unit.
Yeah, it is.
You're going to have to build a smaller.
But that's what we just determined, is you could have an 1,100 square foot house and a 1,200 square foot house on a 6,000 square foot lot. You could have that. I mean, mathematically, you could make it work.
You could.
Yeah. Okay, alright, shall we move on to?
Love that and see what it looks like?
She did, she did draw it. She drew it. Uh, but we're not back, we're not going backwards, Commissioner Corbin?
I just said I, I'd need to draw it for myself and see what it looks like.
Yeah, okay, so we're going to move on to number of units allowed on site. Are we all in agreement that we're going to stick with our general plan in this regard?
Yeah.
One unit?
The only question I have is about other accessory buildings on the site, such as an art studio or a guest house.
They're not units.
They're not dwelling units.
Good, I want to clarify that.
I, I do have a hypothetical about number of units allowed on a site. So let's say someone does have a 10,000 square foot lot and wants to provide, um, affordable, containable housing and build three, 300 square foot ADUs to provide housing for people. If we stick with one unit, if we stick with the general plan, they wouldn't be able to do that.
Well, we have to stick with the general plan.
Less amended.
Hmm, unless amended.
Unless amended in compliance with all the requirements to amend the general plan.
That's a big deal.
Because there's, there's, just in terms of affordable housing, there's been discussion of, well, why, why, why can't we establish some kind of community that has several very small affordable units on it? So if someone has a very large lot and wants to provide that-
Similar to cluster housing.
I just, can I interject? Okay, so I just want to make it very clear that there are other things that, that you could change when we brought one of the properties before you where somebody wanted to do more than one unit on it. The, at the time, the city attorney that we spoke to read the zoning ordinance and it was, you know, there are some, some provisions in the zoning ordinance that say, um, one unit, um, one single family home only, even if you have a very large piece of property. The zoning ordinance doesn't really address cluster housing like some zoning ordinances do. And, um, so a person in a certain zone with a very large piece of property could have a dense, general plan density that would allow them to put more units on it without it being a second unit. I'm not talking about necessarily second units. But I'm talking about, there are some other provisions in the code outside the second unit that are kind of prohibitive and kind of constraining as far as doing cluster housing. And I would just give you the example of when we did Mr. Fisher's property. That would be the example I would give to you. And that there are things that you could do where, where somebody wants to do some kind of, um, has a very large acreage and wants to do something that is more than one single family unit. And there, you could address that, maybe not through this ordinance, but maybe in some of the other things as a companion to city council saying, you know, there are properties where people would, um, places where I've worked before at cluster housing or compounds, where you have maybe a family compound and you have more than ones, that it's large enough to have more than one single family home on it. And, um, so there are some things that you could do. Um, and I think that the zoning ordinance as it's written today is a little bit restrictive for that. But I would encourage that if you're going to do something like cluster housing or something like that, you probably consider doing it through, regardless of whether it's single story or not, through design review, just so that you have control over how the buildings speak to each other and you try to cluster the houses together and leave as much open space as you possibly can. You know, it's kind of a different kind of animal. But there are things that I think that is, the zoning ordinance is still really tight on that would be really nice for Ojai and there are some people that would be doing that. And, and as we say, you know, providing more housing for people. Whether you're a caregiver or whatever they use that housing for.
Is that better left to a separate discussion?
It could be, I'm just opening, I'm just telling you that.
Considering how the hour of the evening at this point.
Well, I know, understand, but I'm just saying that since I've been here, I've seen that in a couple of examples. And, and, um, you know, and so, you know, some of the bigger zone districts here, you could, um, you could allow more than one second unit because I think the general plan density of, correct Matt? The general, general plan density is large. Or would it have to be a single family home?
The traffic issue?
That particular question I would need to analyze further, but the, I think the answer, it would depend on the particular requirements of the general plan. Some general plan designations allow for, um, to put it in numbers, two units per five acres, say, and there's a 10-acre property, by right, it's entitled to four units. By further right from this current state law, they could get one more, that's five. You could adjust those general plan designations to allow greater if clustered and meeting these designer review requirements. I, I think that's certainly within, again, the commission and the council's power, but that would also have to be examined before being adopted.
Commissioner Cegiello?
As I recall, on the Fisher property, the, one of the problems were is that the existing house that he had there was classified as a guest house. And so we weren't, we weren't, or he had the option to classify it as a guest house, but it precluded putting a second dwelling on it. Is that true?
Yes.
At the time, that was true.
Right, but that's no longer true. I want to make that clear.
So, um, okay, so the house, he, there was, this gets really into nuances, I don't really want to get into it. But right now, if you have a guest house, the state preempts the city, you can still have a second unit. The state doesn't preempt the city from, if you have a second unit, you can't have a guest house. We can still prohibit that.
And I'll, I'll add that a guest house that exists now could be converted to a second unit by right, meeting one or more of these categories, provided they jump through the right hoops.
But we have discussed that issue about, you know, and, and honestly, I do believe they're living in that house and so it is actually a second unit.
Right.
And we may want to avoid further discussion of this particular project that's not on tonight's agenda.
Well, the, the concept of a guest accessory building, though, is, is still apropos to this item. And so, uh, so the, I just want to be clear that, uh, in the direction we're moving, a person is allowed to have a detached guest house with a detached, um, second dwelling unit and maybe other detached, uh, um, accessory buildings such as an art studio. Where, how, where is the limit there and how many, how many structures can, can a person?
The limits, and I, I will invite Director Walde to add further commentary, but as I see it, the limits are imposed by lot coverage, setbacks, et cetera. All the physical constraints that limit the buildable envelope of a lot.
Right.
Provided those are met. It's a primary unit and then a guest house, which may be then converted to a secondary unit. Or it's a primary unit with a second, with a second unit. And then a guest house could not be added on top under the city's current code. But if you had a primary unit and you had a guest house, you could add a second unit or you could convert your guest house to a second unit. If you added a second unit, then you could have a primary unit, a guest house and a second unit. However, if you converted your guest house to a second unit, so that you had a primary unit and now a second unit, you cannot add a guest house. It's a tree that clearly needs to be shown in the matrix.
We're in the matrix.
Exactly, it's-
I want the blue pill.
Well, this is why, one of the confusing things people have to deal with at the counter. And I've dealt with clients all the time who have this problem of defining what unit they're in.
The key point to keep in mind is that it's about order in which they're built and it's very particular to your property. So folks, um, if I could say one thing to anybody considering, uh- doing something on the property or who is considering purchasing property with a view of modifying it, come in early and offer it to staff at the counter, the public counter at the community development department, and inquire what is doable on a lot. They'll, they'll answer the question, so you have less confusion later on.
Again, we did at one time talk about redefining guest house. I mean, I kind of encouraged you guys to flush this issue out because we do get often people that, that it's characterized as a guest house, but they're using it as an artist's studio. Meaning that no one's really sleeping, living, watching TV, or doing any of those other things. But it is a conditioned space because it gets hot here. We talked about that before, and you kind of just, everybody's kind of moved on from it. So again, that's open up because, you know, lots of people have conditioned space that we have to consider as a guest house because that's the way it's defined as a livable space. And if you make it to where someone can live in it, then even though you're using it for another purpose, it's still, that's the structure, right? So I think you could define those in a different way. It might lend itself to the horrible thing that people don't like here, which is just a deed restriction telling people, this is what it was permitted at, and this is what you can use it at. And if you change it, it's on you, because legally, this is what it is. And I, often those deed restrictions people don't like, but they do allow a more flexible interpretation. And, and they're actually a good tool because they allow people to do all kinds of things. And then it provides this successor and interest, a true depiction of what they are buying when they're buying that property.
Does the guest house still, or maybe it never required a CUP, does it ever require a CUP?
I think it does.
I think it does require a CUP.
I think it does. I think it does, and I think that was, you know, again, doesn't it, Sherri? Yes, and again, we talked about relinquishing that because again...
And 640 is the limit.
Right. It's a more restrictive process for a less intrusive...
Right.
Which is counterintuitive, yes.
Because we're encouraging second units.
Right.
But not guest house.
So where's, where's that language going to be dealt with in this process? Because that, I think, is an important thing to modify.
Well, I originally had it on this matrix, and I took it off because, again, I was trying to keep it. It got so complex that I started taking things off because, you know, I wanted to keep it, as Chair Zabilla was saying, keep it focused on the things we had here. So I'd be happy to bring it back forward, but I do think it's kind of...
I think it needs to be part of that number of units because it really does fall into place there somehow. You've got to know how many units are going to be on.
Remember, it's not a unit.
I know, I know, okay. Accessory structures.
I, I'm just, I, it can't, under the definition, is commonly used through everything. A unit is when it has a kitchen.
Right.
It's counted as a unit. And so it's very clear, it's not a unit, it's not counted towards your general plan density.
It's an accessory structure.
I think we can just include the definition, perhaps, outside the matrix, just so we, we have that, those facts in hand. Okay.
Well, the reason is because, you know, people do convert these into guest house, and they're, they're related.
Well, the guest house, actually, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but the guest house, the reason it goes through is because it's got a full bathroom. But we used to have an accessory structure code that allowed you to have the two plumbing fixtures, just no shower or bath. And so it was, didn't require the CUP because it didn't have a full bathroom. That makes it easier to convert to the second unit.
Right, so, so someone would, someone was obviously thinking that a CUP puts you on notice, made the rules really clear of what you got and what you couldn't get, which honestly, that's probably not the right tool to use. You know, that's just a lot of burdens and process to go through. And really, it just gets down to, you know, the way that the building permit rules and regulations were years ago, and like, maybe you might had one, you may have had one line that said, accessory structure? You know, didn't, now we don't do that. I mean, now the, the project descriptions are fully flushed out. So somebody's going to know, we're going to keep plans, our archival of administrative record is so much better. No one's going to be able to come in and say, well, I got this permitted as a guest house when they really didn't. Or a second unit when they really didn't. You know, that, those days are gone. You know, everybody knows everybody's business now. So, you know, a deed restriction is only there for the successors and interests so that it comes up and pops up and you go, listen, I'm, I'm not paying value for a second unit when it's really only a guest house. But I think a CUP is probably something we would want to get rid of.
Okay, I agree.
May I circle around back, circle back for a moment? Just so I'm really clear here. And now what I know is called cluster housing. Our general plan doesn't allow for cluster housing, multiple affordable by design units on a larger lot size.
I don't think that, I don't think that the gen, that would probably be something that would be addressed in the zoning ordinance. And it would be something that would be addressing some of the housing policies that are in the housing element, such as providing affordable housing. That I know of, that there is no, some cities allow variable density, and coastal cities usually do that. So they set a benchmark, like maybe 1,000 square feet is a, is a unit, and 500 square feet is a half of a unit, to encourage more smaller units, as you guys were speaking of. So each one, here in Ojai, a unit is a unit is a unit, whether it's six, 200 square feet or 6,000 square feet. It's just defined as, you know, so the, or, and a dense, the density is the same way. So those are kinds of things and tools people use often in zoning ordinances to address having smaller units and allowing people to have a higher density because it's not really a density. You know, it takes two units to make one. But I don't think that would be in the general plan. The policy to allow variable density would be in the general plan, and we don't have that, right?
Right. The other point worth noting is that if you had a property that had sufficiently large with the right density, you could do clustered housing, provided you secured designer view as required and so forth, all the other relevant permits. But I think what you're talking about in, is affordable units clustered above the base density. That is not currently provided for in the general plan. But as Director Wold noted, some cities do provide that, and the city would have the right to do so if, if it wished, and the general plan was amended to do that.
Okay. And am I correct, Chairperson, that that's a distinct conversation from the number of units allowed on site?
I, I think it's part of, I mean, you've brought up a new idea here, so I think what we're saying is it, I'm not sure what, I mean, I would leave it up to staff to decide what the timing of bringing forth that concept would be and how we might affect it.
I, I think that if you're looking at creative ideas to one, you know, save on water and facilitated development that outside the second unit, that'd be a great time to bring up those kinds of things to the city council during your joint meeting. And to say, you know, hey, we kind of spurred these ideas from this discussion and being, you know, brainstorming about stuff. And while we want to keep this separate and move this through, we'd also like your direction on doing these other things, we think that we also think are really good ideas, and this is where we think that they move, they fit into our work program. Seems to me like they're, they're meeting with you fairly often, and they're, and they're, been very clear that they're willing to hear you and give direction and have a two-way dialogue with you, and I think that'd be a great place to do it.
So what I'm hearing is maybe something to discuss at our next joint meeting, at least...
In January.
Which is in January. So not explicitly a part of this, but something...
Right.
Maybe tangentially.
Separate but connected.
Yep. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, we've got to move on because I'm getting tired. Okay. Parking for units not within half a mile. Okay, that's just kind of a done deal, right, Mr. Summers?
Correct.
Okay. And Ms. Wold?
I got one question about that, which is really something I should have answered myself. But the, my understanding is the, the parking, the parking piece was based on an assumption that people within half a mile of public transport won't have cars.
Well, it's just, again, that's, that's the general thought. I mean, again, this is a statewide law that talks to all types of cities and shapes and sizes here in California. And the idea is that, you know, it's one of many, but, you know, obviously, parking is a problem, providing parking. But yes, that was the idea. If you have public transportation, you're going to be using it.
So, I guess my, I'm sure this is going to be an open question, but is that a hard assumption? And does it, does it, how does it intersect with tenant law? And I don't expect you to answer this, Mr. Summers, but is there tenant law that says parking has to be provided for a tenant? I don't know the answer to that. I, I looked and I didn't see it anywhere.
No, the civil code provisions, I did look at this the other day. The civil code provisions that regulate landlord tenancy require a number of things for a unit to be considered habitable. Parking is not one of them.
Yeah, I didn't think so. Okay, sounds good. Commissioner Nolan?
Quick question, and this was about the transportation. I believe I heard earlier that the transportation had to do with regular, regularly scheduled transportation. And is the program that we have now with the trolley and the bus, is that considered regular?
My understanding...
Standards, so it is, okay.
My understanding that they're reg, they're, that was, I'm sorry, excuse me.
No, that's okay, go ahead.
My understanding, the question posed to me is that the regularly scheduled transit stops, routine, year-round, and that was the answer I got. I mean, there, it's, and that's what I've experienced since I've been here. Many tourist cities stop trolleys, you know, and they don't do them during the winter. We do ours all year long. Plus, we have a regular transit that comes in right downtown that goes to Ventura. So you're pretty much served. You get around town and then you get to go regionally to where you may have your job. So there is a way to use public transit.
Okay, so no parking within a half mile of a transit stop, no parking provided for properties located within historic district, which would be Taramina, is our only historic district, yeah?
Correct.
Your neighborhood, Chester. Okay. New driveways to parking provided for an accessory dwelling unit shall be pervious is really what we've, which would go along with what I'm hearing is our desire for all kinds of stormwater capture in the city. So anybody have any feelings against this idea?
Again, also, and I didn't really articulate it here very well, but the idea is that if a person proposes like the Hollywood strips, we, we would approve that.
What's a Hollywood strip?
So it's just like two little concrete strips that go instead of a whole wide driveway, and it's got grass in the middle.
Okay.
Or gravel.
Oh yeah, okay, I'm sorry. I'm old school, sorry about that. As soon as I said it, I was like, oh, take that in, yes. That's right, DG or something. And, and that would be something that we would have to probably put here and then maybe consider for, for others too. But, you know, generally speaking, you're doing DG full width right now under our code. And so in reading this, it kind of looked, it kind of said they were encouraging it to be not bigger. I forget in what section I read. So the idea was to make it pervious, but make that pervious as small as we could, you know, so that pervious doesn't become a burden, you know, like you're not doing something. But most people want it to pervious here. We find that request more often than we do people wanting to actually do. It's cheaper to do DG.
And by allowing the Hollywood strips, it's actually more affordable to install, and you're actually capturing more stormwater.
Right.
More filtration. So, I mean, ultimately, if someone's okay with it, it's a good approach.
So I can add more details to that if everybody's okay with it, but I just, I just was trying to capture what you guys originally told me.
Yeah, okay. Short-term rentals?
My understanding is no. That's how I put it down.
But he's yes, okay. Deed restrictions. Anybody disagree with, yes, 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 okay. Design review, as outlined? Okay. And then we're going to talk about design criteria, perhaps, drill down a little bit on that when we bring this back again with the refining that we have discussed all along the way. Okay?
On the deed restriction on page eight of eight, I just put down there that you asked me to provide a hardship, and like I said, I pointed this out when I gave my staff report. I'm happy, that was just going off of what I'd heard originally from all of you folks. And I've heard this numerous times at different city council, building appeals, planning commission, this, this story about somebody who can't physically live in their property and they, they want to be able to still have income and pay the mortgage. When you're in crisis, you don't want to have that as a headache. So that's why I did them the way I did it. If there's something else, just please tell me, and I, I would include that for your consideration.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to share in this, or can we move on? Okay, goody, let's move on. I'm sorry, I'm going to just double check. Okay, no, I'm not. Okay, discussion item, discuss the planning commission making a recommendation to city council that the city host an all the Val, an Ojai Valley Wide Community Outreach Workshop presented by the Sustainability Ad Hoc Committee in cooperation with Surf Rider and Ocean Friendly Gardens related to stormwater retention measures and their implementation. So, I, I think, I think Commissioner Nolan probably has some notes about this. This is a, just a very general, because we had so much to consider here with the second units. This is just going to be kind of, as I imagine it, a fairly, I don't know, not so, not too specific discussion, just some general ideas, which will let Commissioner Nolan frame for us, and then maybe have a quick discussion about what we may or may not want to recommend to city council as retain, as pertains to stormwater retention, rainwater retention.
Okay, good.
Policies.
So this is in light of our task to look at water. And one of the things we had mentioned was having an educational component. So I'm just, I'm bringing this forward just as a discussion, you know, we can decide if it's something we want to move forward with as Commissioners Zabilla had mentioned. And what you have before you is, thank you Sherri for printing these out today. There's two extra ones there. So I just did a little, a mini package, and this is based on what the city of Ventura is doing, and a workshop that was performed by Ocean Friendly Gardens. So you have those two handouts. One of them is a flyer from a workshop that they happened to do in the fall. The following photo is actually the result of that workshop in our last rain, so you can see how it works. And then there's also the curb cut detail provided by the city of Ventura. So you have a copy of that. And then, of course, it has their general notes and construction notes. So I'm just using this as a sample, a local sample or template. And then I also included, although this is a little bit different, but this is a fact sheet from the city of Los Angeles, it's sort of Green Street standards. And this pretty much has to do with, say, a development or something that public works might be doing, or something that could happen in a parking lot. But if you flip the page, there's also some nice photos, and you can see some samples of those applications. And the only reason I put that in, because what I'm really looking at is something that would happen more on the residential level. I know this has come up that we may want to add something to our complete streets, and I'm sure that Councilmember Wyrick may fill us in a little bit when he does his presentation. But some things that we'd like to see the city actually implement as far as stormwater capture and filtration and what have you. So I'm going to go back to the original handouts, the ones from Ventura. And I'm going to start with, first of all, well, why would we even want to do this? And then I'll, I'll kind of go into the what. But the why is, I would say that the most important thing is this is an opportunity to capture stormwater, but it's also a great opportunity to capture polluted stormwater, or it could even be irrigation runoff. So what it does is an opportunity to capture what they call the first flush. The first flush is the first three-quarters to one inch of rainwater in a season, at the beginning of the season. But it could be also runoff from irrigation. And it's capturing all the pollution that's in the street. A lot of it you can't even see. It's microscopic, so you have like brake dust, you have petroleum byproducts, you could have pesticide residue. You could have animal feces, you know, bird, dog, anyone, and other things. And in addition to, you could have, you know, fertilizers, chemical fertilizers. Then you can also have trash, you know, things that you can visibly see. And rather than have that go down the storm drain into our water supply, this bioswale which are curb cut, which I'll go into a little bit more, is an opportunity to capture some of that water, have it go into the bioswale, and the filtration process happens. So basically, what you're doing is you are removing soil. You're creating what I would call, just to visually describe it, it's like a little, a mini creek in the median between the street and your property. Now, not every property in Ojai is going to have that application. Off the top of my head, I can think of the neighborhood behind Vaughn's, the Del Oro neighborhood. There's some areas right downtown that they actually have a curb. And you can also do this if you don't have a curb, but essentially, you're doing it on the public right of way. Some other whys to you, why you may want to do this, I just spoke about, you know, capturing polluted water. You're also doing a recharge, so that water essentially, rather than... You're also doing a recharge, so that water essentially, rather than going down the street into the storm drain, could be recharging back into the soil. Why do we wanna do that? Well, we know that we wanna recharge our aquifer, number one, but you also have soil microbes in the soil, and the microbes are actually helping with that filtration process. And a lot of times, they need water to be activated, so that's another good reason. And the other thing is, if the bioswale or that cut, um, area has, um, vegetation, potentially if you're capturing more water and that soil can hold the water, you can reduce your irrigation cycle, or you may not have to irrigate. So there's, those are three, I think, really good reasons for doing it. Um, and so, what is it, and you know, how does it work? So basically, you, we, we could either do, um, you know, what I would call like a pilot project and do this, whether or not we do it on, um, public property, I mean, I could think of, there's a great center medium in the Golden West neighborhood that has trees that the city maintains, has a curb around it, that could be an option, or maybe we get a volunteer in the city and we do it out of residents. Um, but what you do is, you make a cut in the concrete, you make two cuts, so one of them is an inlet, the other one's an overflow outlet. You're removing soil because you wanna go deeper than the street and the curb cut, or the sample that I showed you will do that. Then you're actually adding compost into the soil that you're gonna keep. Why? Because the compost is gonna feed the soil microbes, which we want, and they're gonna actually help, um, the soil retain water, which we want, especially if it's planted. And then, of course, the extra water gets fil-, filtered down, hopefully back into the aquifer, but not going down the drain. So, um, we have the potential to do a workshop, I've, I'm in touch and I sometimes work with the, um, Surf Rider, Ocean Friendly Gardens people, they've been doing this in Ventura. Other communities are doing this all over the state, so this isn't anything new, this just would be new for Ojai. And the reason I'm bringing it here is, is this something we would like to make a recommendation and have the city do as an example? If we decided we wanted to do it and allow residential property owners to do it after, like, say, our demonstration, we would have to, I believe, most likely adopt a detail and whether or not they have to pay for or permit or not, I believe at this point, the city of Ventura doesn't charge, I think you just, there's a form you fill out, they want it, they wanna know what you're doing, you have to do it correctly, but they're encouraging it and they want people to do it. So that would be a consideration. Um, I, I probably pretty much said anything and I'm open to questions, um, and then I will say that if it is something we, depending on how we wanna go tonight and we do wanna move forward, maybe we ask the city council next, I'm willing, um, as, I mean, it relates to complete streets and also the sustainability committee, subcommittee, to, you know, take it forward. The city doesn't necessarily have to do a lot of work, they probably would do the curb cut. You basically get, you want people, you want the public to come and participate and do this, so that they'll do it, you know, on their own property, and that's how it's been working in other communities. So, I'm willing to kind of spearhead it, if there's interest.
Thank you, Commissioner Nolan, very, very enlightening, it's beautiful. Did you wanna say something?
I think, uh, maybe we should, we, do we have a big agenda for the, uh, city council meeting?
The joint meeting?
Yeah.
We only have an hour. We only have an hour, and I know we, we, we have this, this, the second unit and probably development standards that are probably outstanding, so I think the time is gonna be short, as usual, but maybe in the context of the development standards, we could fold this in.
Well, I think this, this concept is a good, uh, it's, it's a good practice to start doing these pilot projects. We talked about that before, and this would be a perfect example on how to go about doing it. So I'd like to figure out how we can not just do this, but do other things like this, like the, the, the ordinance they have in Galita, whereby they're able to come up with sustainable options, but get them through the-
Right.
-bureaucratic system faster and easier.
Pursue that also.
Yeah, yeah, and so this is, like, could be a perfect project for that.
Yeah, I think the other thing too is, I, I have members of the public saying, oh my gosh, you know, we have this water crisis, we're in a doubt, what can I do? And like I said, not everyone's going to wanna do this, not everyone's gonna be able to do it, the same thing with gray water or some other things, but I think the more opportunities we provide, the more people will get involved and, um, every drop counts, as I like to say.
Well, I'd also think that, you know, if there's some way we could expand this a little beyond curb cuts to, to maybe make it part of, um, you and I have talked about this, um, a larger program that's about sinking and slowing water on people's residential properties, because curb cuts, um, you know, are, um, most of the time by definition, right, public right of way, but what, what can individual residents be doing and how can we encourage individual residents in the city and valleywide to be sinking and slowing the water on their property? And, and, and maybe there's a way we can sort of make this one little, one bigger campaign, educational campaign and materials in the lobby and whatever. Um, of course, um, dependent on staff time and resources, um, sorry, but, um, anyway.
I just-
Yeah, of course.
I just, um, think it's really timely and interesting because when we went out on the 601 project, Crestview, that you've heard a couple times here, that whole neighborhood has this, um, I forget what they call it, but the separated, the separated sidewalk from, it's a different model, and it's really interesting how people have handled that space. And, um, I, when I drove through there the first time, I thought to myself, who let them fill all that stuff in with concrete, you know, it was kind of strange. Um, so there's, there is a neighborhood that still has this separate, I don't know if there's, I haven't been in Ojai long enough to know how many of them-
That's one of them, and I forgot to mention.
Yeah, and it's kind of interesting because if we actually had, um, some of that worked into our design review criteria-
Mm-hmm.
-we would, we would be able to tell people what they, so, so like, somebody like 601 came in, we would say, hey, you know, you've got that all filled in. I understand why people filled that in because it was difficult to mow-
Hard to maintain.
Well, yeah, back in the day, it was hard to mow, and then everybody's dog-
Irrigation overspray.
Right, exactly.
Can't irrigate it efficiently.
And so, it's, it's a, it's a prime neighborhood to kind of do something out there, I think.
Right.
And I think it would be great to then, Taryn, what the chair had to say is that, you know, that's one of those things that is silent in the design review guidelines, and so people kinda did whatever they wanted to do out there, even though it's probably public space.
Mm-hmm. Right, and I like Rosalie's idea, and I, I'd be completely open to it, to make it bigger than just that, and possibly, um, because, uh, Ocean Friendly Gardens, the other program they have, the Surf Rider Ocean Friendly Gardens, they, they get a, a neighbor who volunteers their property, and basically, um, usually it's, you know, a smaller lot, but they basically, they get volunteers in, uh, the Surf Rider people, um, are there, I've actually done it with some, and actually been one of the, um, leaders with another group, um, in Oxton did this, but they kill the front lawn, they go in with volunteers and they basically show them how to do it, and how to slow it, sink it, spread it, come up with the plant palette, do the drip irrigation, and people like it. A lot of people show up, it's been very successful, and it's been also part of the lawn rebate. As a matter of fact, today, this afternoon, I got an RFQ, request for, or RFP, request for proposal from the county of Orange County, I'm not gonna respond 'cause it's too far away, but they're developing this whole program through their water district, and it's, it's a lawn removal one, but they, they're hiring landscape architects to come up with these sample plans that they're gonna have on their website, and they want people to come in and do it, and then you get like four hours of consultation time, it's pretty interesting. Not that we have to do that, but communities are reaching out and they're trying to figure out, how can we conserve, how can we manage our water? Um, anyway, that's, okay.
So, I guess, um, to be continued, we have our liaison here from, um, not yet, not your turn, I'm just pointing out that you're here. And, um, we also have our, um, mayor-elect in the back as well, so.
Well, I'm sorry, can I just, um, ask, what, what would you like staff to do on this item?
Um, I don't know that, I don't know, I mean, I, I'm thinking maybe that, um, we could just make this part of, um, if we concur here, um, part of, um, one of the, maybe two items that we discuss at our joint meeting.
Okay, so I'll just-
And I can, yeah, keep it concise, you know, it doesn't have to be-
So I will prepare as part of the agenda, then I can put together these materials and pr-, and the city council has them ahead of time?
Mm-hmm, and ideally, if city council decides to go ahead, it'd be really nice to do it before the end of the rainy season.
Okay, I can do that, thank you.
I think the goal is to-
Sorry to interrupt, but I just wanna make sure I know my-
No, not at all, not at all.
I know my after-action items.
No, I'm losing focus. Okay, um, anything else? Nope, okay. Um, let's move on to our informational items, director decisions.
All right, so, um, it's typical, just the smaller type things that we're doing here, most of them are signs, tree reports, address assignments, and home occupation. So, the relatively straightforward, I can answer any questions if you have any, um, but if you don't, I'll just move on, which is, um, then our active code enforcement, um, and we've, again, have kept this separate, um, the short-term rental code enforcement separate from the other issues we're handling. We do have another, um, code compliance inspector now that's been here for, you know, a period of time, who's, who's, um, one of the ins and outs of the city and, um, code compliance, and so, we are wrapping up, um, believe it or not, wrapping up some cases and bringing them to conclusion. Um, city's very pleased with what's going on, and we continue to work on the short-term rentals and monitor, um, the websites and the situation, get compl-, we continue to get complaints from outside sources too, and there's an ongoing, so there are two separate people working on that, one person working on short-term rentals, one person working on code compliance, um, um, issues. So, um, with that said, I just think that's pretty straightforward. You should start to see some of those old cases, um, moving off that list, that's been a priority for staff. Um, upcoming future agenda items, so, um, Monday, we're having our special neighborhood meeting with the Bryant Circle Rezone, and that's just, um, to let you know that that's just a neighborhood meeting and informal with staff. People that come, we've sent out, um, notices or published it in the, um, the paper, and that's just to do kind of a question and answer, uh, roundtable so that we can move the project forward to you, but we didn't want to blindside people, we wanna make sure that they fully have, you know, time to digest this and understand how it's gonna affect them, rather than just putting it on the planning commission and having a very lengthy meeting as you have people here that are trying to get questions answered. This is kind of like a precursor to the public hearing, moving it forward, um, and we just felt it was necessary to, um, answer everybody in sort of a workshop and sort of a, a familiar basis. The twenty, the December 21st meeting is canceled, and we'll say that, um, the next city ca-, the, I was requested to, to, um, have, um, the planning commission at tonight's meeting make sure that everybody understands that the next city council meeting on the 13th is at the Boyd Center, so that, um, because it's at a special location, we just wanted to make sure if people are listening, they, they do know that it's gonna be there so that, um, people don't get lost where they're going. And then, um, January 4th, you'll have a meeting, um, then, and you'll have the Blanch Street project, which you saw as a concept review, coming for, for, um, review and approval, the skateboard park lights time extension, which requires, you know, procedurally requires that you do it, so that's going. And then on January 10th, your special meeting. And so, if there's any other items you'd like for me to present to the city council, um, you know, I will need them, I mean, the only next opportunity for us to get together and talk about it would be Jan-, January 4th, that would be fairly close to getting those out, so, um, we'll be preparing a agenda, I think, with what we talked about tonight. And then, um, with that, I just think that, um, there's really not much going on in these pending projects, staff continues to work on them, a lot of them are fairly complex and require a lot of environmental review and studies coming in, and we'll move them forward as, as, um, as they become ready. And with that, I think that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Okay, um, planning commission, committee reports. Commissioner Powers, do you have a brief report on the city council meeting of the 29th?
I do. I wasn't able to attend in person, uh, but I did watch the video, most of the video. Um, the, um, Bravo program of the music festival gave a, a report, um, just kinda stating the, uh, um, opportunities that the Bravo music program offers in the schools. So the Bravo music program is, is the educational wing of the music festival, they're the ones that put on the, um, holiday home look-in. So there was a brief slide presentation about that, and just sharing with the council, 'cause, um, it seems like they don't come to the council meetings very often to share, to give a report and share, and they were encouraged to do so more often, because it's been an ongoing program for quite a few years. Um, I myself actually was, have been one of the musicians for the last three years in one of the homes for the holiday home look-in, and, um, it raises quite a bit of money and gives a lot of children, um, music education and access to instruments and, and, um, uh, music, uh, education development and appreciation that they normally wouldn't have. Um, and something I didn't know about was that the library offers eBooks, so the librarian gave a, a report on, uh, on some testimonials they had of some, uh, elders who aren't able to get to the library and they're able to download eBooks, and I didn't know that was something that the library provided, so I thought that was a, a huge benefit. Um, someone briefly spoke from the public about, uh, fireplace pollutants, um, through the smoke in the city, and, uh, Mayor Blas, Blas suggested to have it put on a discussion item for the future, not that there was anything hard going to be done about it, but because of the nature of the Ojai Valley and the way pollutants stay in the air here, um, you know, first course of, of action, of course, as was mentioned, was, you know, the just compassion from neighbor to neighbor, how much smoke is being, uh, uh, blown out of the fireplace, but then, uh, just kinda have a discussion about that. Mayor Protim Wyrick is here, but, um, I, he did, uh, speak and gave a report, he sits on the board of the EDC, which is the Economic Development Collaborative, and, uh, at the meeting, they were going to give ideas on how the city can increase bandwidth, and, um, I loved, I loved, uh, uh, Mayor Protim Wyrick's words, he said, "We are statistically underprivileged, and it's measurable," and the, um, EDC has contracts with the state, so they're gonna be providing some suggestions to the city in regards to, um, what we can possibly do about internet bandwidth to help out professionals and others that are here, 'cause it's slow compared to other cities. Um, Councilman Laura was the liaison for the Green Coalition, and, um, they're working on public educational programs regarding water management, and they're continuing to do so. Um, he's also on the board of the help of Ojai, and they're looking at more senior programs for 2017 and, uh, kitchen and deck, uh, renovations at Little House. Um, there's a fundraiser December 10th at the Ojai Valley Hospital. Um, there's a discussion about the update on user and regulatory fees, and, uh, city manager McClary, um, wanted to continue that to a date certain of January 12th, 10th, and he requested a continuance on that, and it was granted. Um, and Mayor Protim Wyrick would like to see not just the time it takes to complete a task, but also the efficiency of best practices for a task. Um, and it was a very interesting discussion. Um, are there standards of effectiveness for how long it takes to accomplish a task? Like a comparison of different venues, not just an internal study. Just because someone is spending a lot of time on something doesn't mean they're being effective with their time. So, um, does the League of California Cities have some published sources on that, was the question, and it's, it's, um, something he would like to, um, see personally in the report. Um, Mr. McClary said the consultant has completed all the tasks on their end, and the staff still have some questions for them, there's still some concerns, which is why staff didn't wanna rush it and bring it forward at that particular council meeting. Um, there was a lengthy discussion about the, um, cultural resources and the ad hoc committee that's been going on for a couple of years. Um, there was an extension of a deadline requested for the cultural resources and ad hoc committee to December 1st, again, this was November 29th council meeting. Um, Julie Tumamayet, um, who is there, who's on the ad hoc committee and, uh- Julie Tumamayet, who is there, who's on the ad hoc committee and representing the local native culture, said, "They've done everything council has asked of us. What we haven't seen is legal counsel doing policy writing." So, she said, "We've been doing all the work that's been brought to you." She referenced the North Dakota and the need to preserve and protect the history, and that we're a small town, and let's not make things more complicated with language when some of it is so simple. They've yet to consult the Native American community, and that part needs to be done." So, she requested a extension. Councilman Haney and Councilman Laura are both on the ad hoc committee for cultural resources. So, Councilman Haney requested an extension for the ad hoc committee report to December 16th and then a date certain to January 17th. And the upshot was that a report be presented to the new council December 20th, and that on January 10th at the city council meeting, there'll be a status report from staff where they stand on the report.
Just to offer one clarification on that, in case anyone is confused, or was it both tonight and that meeting? The council's action set a deadline of December 20th for the ad hoc committee to provide the report to the council, but the council will not be meeting on December 20th. They will be receiving that report electronically. It will be made available to the public at the same time it is made available to the council, but it will not be, the council's not meeting on December 20th. The council's meeting to consider the item will be January 10th, or as otherwise scheduled by the mayor and city manager. Thank you.
Great. City manager McClary spoke about translating the city council agendas into Spanish, and he suggests they do that as part of the 2017 fiscal year budget. Each agenda's about 1,000 words, and it would cost $100 to $170. Councilwoman Clapp wanted to have that available more so, from what I recall, more so as a PDF online than actual hard copy that would be sent out, or was it both?
Councilmember Clapp's suggestion was to, instead of hiring a professional translation service, ensure that the agendas are made available in a text-readable PDF format, and then connect those who would like a translation of the agenda to Spanish or another language to one of several online translation services in order to ensure availability of a translated agenda, but also at a very reasonable price. And the council directed consideration of that.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that. And then, the last agenda item that I would, the last agenda item I was able to view on the video is to reduce speeding on Kenyatta. And the chief of police was requested if he could look in that. And so, the police department is considering, I think, just having some cars there, looking at speeding down Kenyatta, and if necessary, putting some kind of measurement device there as well. And lots of kudos for the new stop signs at Signal and Aliso. And that's the end of my report.
Well, then, you can have chocolate.
That was the most thorough.
Yes. Just a bit of guidance, Commissioner Powers, going forward, five minutes would be sufficient, but thank you for your thorough coverage. Give some to Sherry, because she needs a little caffeine. No? Okay. Okay. And quickly moving on to Commissioner Nolan's Babs report.
And to go very quickly. So, I attended the Babs meeting on November 18th, and actually, it was the first one I had ever attended. It went on, I was there for an hour and a half, and mostly what we talked about, the discussion item was Ventura County Fire Apparatus Access Code in 2016 Ventura County Fire Code. And the recommendation was to review and discuss the proposed amendments and provide a recommendation to the city council on the adoption of said codes. Long story short was, in the end, the Babs decided to not go with what the majority of the other municipalities in the county are doing. They're going above and beyond state code. They decided not to. They felt it was, it could be more costly and more of a burden to the property owner. And so, that's what I believe their final recommendation was. And then, the other item was the California Building Code and an update. And let me just flip my page here really quick. So anyways, they look at building standards, Article 9, and amendments to be adopted to Title 24 satisfy all state law. And they discussed that it had been adopted over 10 years ago, and it was no longer applicable. And Mr. Maynard, who was there, who I believe has worked on it with them, recommended adopting beyond the state codes and recommended updating the municipal code and reviewing building standards every three years. And then, they discussed code upgrades and enforcements, and mostly regarding health and safety, for example, GFI, spark arresters, and dead trees.
Thank you.
Offset.
Yeah.
But I just had the one topic mostly.
Don't get me started. I have a really good joke that I could talk about offsets. Okay. So, is there a sustainability committee report?
No, there isn't, other than what I did tonight on the curb cut. But I will contact Ms. Wald with maybe a little more information for the joint meeting and the agenda. And I think that's it for the moment.
Thank you so much. Okay. Mayor Protem Wyrick.
I'm not going to take too long, and everybody has their sugar rush for me, so, you know, last, one last little bit of time here. That was a most organized, reportedly. Thank you. On the, I see the skateboard park lights, like time extension, they raised the money, right? So, what's the holdup now on construction?
I don't think there's any holdup. I think that they're just organizing, the point person is now Mr. Ulrich.
Right.
And they're meeting with him, and then...
Okay. So, it's in process?
Oh, yeah. It's moving in shape.
I saw a time extension. I thought we got another delay there, but okay, good.
No, 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 no.
They raised the money.
The time extension is, it expired...
Yeah, it's just a normal, yeah.
And the applicant did a timely filing of their extension.
Yeah. I'm kind of excited. Well, yeah, that happens, too. But I'm kind of, I mean, they, you know, they went out and got a grant.
Mm-hmm.
They've raised the money.
Yeah.
It's great, you know?
No, there is no impediment.
All right. Wonderful. On the ideas for outreach workshop, I really like the approach. I really like the idea. I think you're going to find a very receptive council. What about rain barrels?
Well, that can be part of, we could actually make it comprehensive.
Yeah. I mean, it's kind of low-hanging fruit.
No, but it's actually a good one.
And the reason I'm thinking is that some cities have bought rain barrels in quantity.
Right. And you still can...
And then, distributed them at cost to the residents for rain barrel kits. And, you know, it's just little things like that. It sounds so pedestrian, but on the other hand, these things matter.
Right.
Every little bit matters.
Well, we could actually make it into a bigger than the curb cuts, but it could be everything that a residence could do.
Right.
And have that. And I'm willing to, like I said, spearhead it.
Just a thought.
No, I like it.
Yeah. Moving on, it's, again, the reason for the audience, probably going to be a big crowd. I mean, we have two new council people. We have two council people to wish good, you know, good wishes towards. And I'm sorry that Mayor Lake Johnston left, but I think we all should really make an effort to be there and welcome our first elected mayor, you know? Going on a few things. This is, I think, relevant for you guys to think about as a commission. It's kind of my job as liaison to mention these kinds of things. The complete streets, just, I urge every one of you who hasn't done it already, get online, the online Ojai Municipal Code, put in complete streets in the search term, and read the code. Right there, it says, "Anything project in the right-of-way," here are the guidelines, including green street topologies, traffic calming, and it's all there right now, including you guys deliberating and coming up with guidelines.
Right.
If you wish to do so. I mean, the code's there right now. And I, my reading of the code is that it's quite permissive in terms of what the planning commission can come up with in terms of guidelines for rights-of-way issues, inclusive of traffic calming, multimodal, you know, pedestrian safety, and green street topologies. I don't, I think nothing's holding you back, in other words, if you want to embrace it and come up with some right-of-way guidelines. I would urge each one of you to read, just get, you know, you can read the municipal code online. It's amazing what you can find in there. And just type in the search term "complete streets" and read it. It's right there, planning commission guidelines. And if you don't develop them, then they reference these documents, these references to use in lieu of guidelines being developed by the planning commission. So, just, you know, there's more work for you to do if you want, you know? So, I guess what I'm trying to say is I don't think there's anything that council needs to do to enable you to do that. It's all there in the code already. That's all I'm saying. Are you disagreeing with me, or? Okay.
For those who are curious, the section he's citing in particular is in the designer view perma section of the code, 10-2, 2006-09.
Thank you, Mr. Summer. I didn't bring, yeah, I know too well.
We'll remember that, too.
Yeah.
Do you see that as part of the development standards conversation, since we kind of have a hierarchy going?
No, I think it's just one part of the overall. This would be limited to right-of-way.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
But I mean, do you see it as part of that?
Development standards would be on top of this, yes. That would require some council action.
Right.
Yes. Yeah. But I'm just saying, especially for the right-of-way issues, which are important, you know? We have packed the Board of Supervisors hearing room with short-term rental people, short-term rental, you know, advocates against short-term rentals primarily, down at the Board of Supervisors. So many people from Ojai Valley went to the Board of Supervisors meeting that they couldn't get through public comment, and they had to continue until December to have a whole another session on public. I think they had like 40 or 50 people wanting to make public comment. And the reason I'm bringing this up is I think that the Ojai Valley and our actions, I'm really proud of ourselves, frankly, you know? The actions of the Ojai, the city of Ojai and the Ojai Valley in general, and the actions of, that, you know, we've come together and done, you know, in terms of governing ourselves, are having an impact on the county. Not just the unincorporated area in the Ojai Valley, but the unincorporated area in the whole Ventura County. I really think that the actions of the Ojai Valley are, and what we've done as a council, but, you know, but I mean all of ourselves collectively, are really having an impact on bringing this issue to bear, to be resolved. I think the way it's going in terms of the unincorporated area is they're trying to find a way to allow home shares are hosted while banning non-hosted. That looks, based on the testimony, that's how it looks. But the Plan Don't Ban people have reorganized, and then the Ojai First people have been down there, and it was quite a sight to behold, you know, a scattering of people from the rest of Ventura County, and then the Ojai Valley is, you know, expressing themselves, ourselves. It was quite nice. But I'm just saying, it's an example of how we can take initiatives here that have effects beyond, I think, in a good way, beyond our small city limits. On the, okay, a couple of things. The planning director for the county, not Kathleen, has issued a director's minor, a minor change opinion that the rock quarry, Mosler's rock quarry trucks can, for the next 40 years, continue as they are. They've included some surf rider consent decree issues into, beyond the expiration of the consent decree into the CUP. And where of concern to myself and a few others, and probably more soon, is that they decided that the longstanding prohibition against the gravel trucks going by Nordoff High School before 8:00 a.m. is going to be changed to 7:00 a.m., right in the height of the student commuter time. Why they sought to change this? The city manager, Steve McClary, I got to give a lot of kudos to him. We brought this to his attention. He got on the phone with county planning already. They're denying they did what they did. They're saying, "Oh, we didn't change anything except give them more, 40 more years." No. You have the prior conditions that say 8:00 a.m., not before, and the new conditions say 7:00 a.m. And it's, "Oh, no, we didn't do that." So, we may appeal. The city actually may appeal, the school board may appeal, Stop the Trucks may appeal this director's decision. I think it's upsetting. Frankly, I think the trucks should be prohibited from going by the high school during the morning and the afternoon peak period, personally. So, this is something that I think is, I wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. Two more things. We are on track to be the only city in Ventura County that's going to seek to provide regulated access to medical cannabis by January 1, to accept applications for licenses. I'm very much one of the people that thinks this is important to do. Most everybody else's reaction at the county and the city level is to me, "Yeah, the will of the people has been expressed, but we don't know what to do, so we're just going to say no to everything, as much as we can, for as long as we can." I'm being a little facetious, but that's what I'm seeing. I watched the county deliberations on this online, and I think we're showing, more frankly, I think we're showing leadership in the county in terms of intelligence and compassion. That's my personal opinion on this matter, in terms of focusing on the medical cannabis There'll be further work on this that's going to come to you as a planning commission as we develop the more full implementation. What we've done right now is just by urgency ordinance. There will be more to come that will intimately involve the planning commission in terms of how we deal with both the medical cannabis statutes and Prop 64. So, you think that the second unit issue is complicated. Wait till you start deliberating on that one. Finally, school board passed a notice of surplusing for the Chaparral property on November 13th, I believe. City has yet to receive notice as of this afternoon, when I asked the city manager. There is a 60-day period that kicks in for certain public agencies, of which the city of Ojai is one of the highest priority ones. I'm sure Mr. Summers will correct me if I'm wrong on any of these statements. And they have to ask us what, if we're interested in the property, before it goes out to seal bid for private developers' proposals. I have a personal opinion as a individual city council person that public property should remain in public purpose. I am going to advocate that we consider, that we discuss, and in fact, it will be on the agenda for closed-session discussion. It's listed as the address on the closed-session discussion for...
It might be moved to 10 based on the mayor's overall choices, but that has to be seen because we haven't received that notice.
But we haven't received the notice. The reason it was scheduled for the first meeting of the new council was we were worried about the notice being received right away, and the 60 days starts clicking. All right? I think it's worthy of discussion as to whether or not the city has a role to play here in terms of thinking about public purposes for this public land. I can think of several things that could be done. I don't want to talk about them right now, but I can, I have, you know, myself and others have a whole list of possible things that perhaps the city ought to consider gaining control of that property if the school board doesn't want it. That's my personal opinion. Why are you involved? It's Zone PL. If it goes... If it goes to private developers, any use outside of education involves a rezone comes to you. They have not had any, to my knowledge, communication with us whatsoever on the school board about the issue of rezoning, which would be part of any value at all to any developer would have to have the rezone. I'm not sure about their approach to this whole matter. I would have preferred a joint workshop for the community to discuss this, possible joint discussions about, you know, maybe a joint powers or a joint venture of some sort, but it's obviously a major issue that the school board has set in motion, the mechanism that possibly would turn over that, all that public land in the heart of our city to private developers. I have, I have some issues with that personally. Am I misstating anything? Okay. All right. So I just wanted to get that out there. I think a lot of, it kind of, it happened just before Thanksgiving, and it was off a lot of people's radar, but it's potentially a very significant measure that the school board has taken. Let's see. That's enough for now. So, you know, food for thought, and we're going to have another interesting year.
Thank you. Is the commissioner appreciation dinner on the 16th?
Yes.
Okay, so just, at the Boyd Center? So just reminding the commissioners that that's happening, and don't forget, I don't, I don't know that I've seen a proper invitation.
She sent them out, but at 6 o'clock.
Oh, I don't check my mail.
7 o'clock dinner.
Okay. I better check my own mail then. I just want to thank the commission for another year of diligence and hard work and volunteerism, and thank you so much, and wish you all really good holidays, and if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we are adjourned.